I'm not going to say a word about the meeting because Alderman.
Don't say anything.
I'm not going to.
Don't say a word.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm hungry.
I am hungry.
I'm starving.
You are, sir. Chuck, come here. I'm scared.
I think Brad's hungry. He said he wasn't going to stand in the way of it, but he went along.
September 15th, 2020, meeting of the City Council, City of Springfield is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
We'll do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Philginsy.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, quorum is present.
Thank you. First item on our zoning agenda is document number 2020-035 for the property located at 3405 Embassy Drive. Petitioner is Brandon Angie Maddox. Present zoning classification is R1, Single Family Residence District, Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief a variance of Section 155.001 regarding accessory buildings to allow a pool house to include a water connection for a bathroom and a kitchen. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We accept the first planning and zoning recommendation.
They're second.
Second the motion.
They're moving second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Then ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is document number 2020-036 for the property located at 1525 South MacArthur Boulevard. Petitioners Edward Cully. Present zoning classification is R5B, General Residence and Office District, Section 155.021. Requested zoning relief and conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.021(c)(2), conditional permitted uses in the R5B General Residence and Office District and Section 155.187, general conditions to allow a barber and beauty shop. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to accept the petition as submitted.
Second.
They're moved to accept the petition as submitted. And second, any discussion?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, property owner, Mr. Edward Cully, and business tenant, Samantha Stevens, for making the improvements to that property on MacArthur Boulevard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Hopefully, the voting is now open. Can we do it like that? Would show up on the board? Nope, doesn't look like it. So clerk.
I don't see what, Mayor.
Okay. Clerk, if you call the roll.
Yes. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Then ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. This time, the chair will recognize Treasurer Buescher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of August had a beginning balance of $14,458,585. We took in total receipts of $9,971,513. We had total disbursements in the month of August of $9,776,391, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of August of 14,651,707. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
So I move.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have Director Bill McCarthy. Give an update on the financial report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. It looks like the presentation won't be up on the TV, but you all should have this. I passed it out ahead of time in front of you. This is the presentation. It's very similar to last month, just with updated numbers. So if you look at page two, the corporate fund revenue loss scenarios as a percentage versus budget, I just want to point your attention to state and city sales tax. We did get another month in. We got the month of June. And the month of June was significant because that's when the state went from phase two, I believe, to phase three. And so, as expected, we did see quite an uptick in the month of June. We actually, when we take the budget and we spread it out based on previous experience, when you look at what we actually did in June versus that spread, we were up 3% over what was expected or budgeted for state sales tax, still 3% under for city sales tax. Not terribly unexpected, like I said. We talked about this internally for a while, and there had been all this, we believe, pent-up demand from March and April and May. Once things really opened up quite a bit in the month of June, we expected to see an uptick. This is a little higher than we anticipated, but certainly not terribly unexpected with what we thought might happen. So we took those numbers. We talked about it internally, and for now, we decided to leave the projections going forward at the same level they were last month because we want to wait and see what happens when we get the October. That would be July taxes, which would coincide with moving to phase four, which, at that point in time, depending on what we see, we'll make the adjustments then. But we have incorporated the actual numbers through September into the numbers that you have in front of you. And that does improve the situation a little bit, as you'll see. We'll just skip the next page. Those numbers pretty much are the same. That takes us to the updated expected revenue shortfall, which is page four. You see Scenario A, which again is our best-case scenario. We're looking at down to about $7.7 million in lost revenue. Think last month, it was around eight, so it has come down a little bit because of the actual numbers for the month of June sales taxes. Taking our Scenario D, or worst-case scenario, down to about $13 million. If you remember back when we first started looking at this many months ago, we were somewhere in the $10 to $16 million range. So certainly, as we get more data, as we thought might happen, those numbers are changing, luckily for the better, not for the worse. The next page, just an update of what we think we're going to lapse this year. We're still in that $3 million range. In fact, we've updated it a bit to about $3.1 million in unexpended budget authority is what our expectation is. The only real area of concern we have when it comes to that is we are seeing rather high police and fire overtime. And so those numbers are something we're keeping a close eye on. But those are higher than we had anticipated and higher than we had even budgeted. Police, I kind of understand because they're down so many officers. Fire, we thought would get better when they had a class of like 12 or something come on in the month of May, and that just hasn't been the case. So we're a little concerned there. Next page is the updated corporate fund scenarios, or what we call the P&amp;L. And what we've done in this case that we hadn't done before is we incorporated that $3.1 million on the previous page into the expense side of this. Previously, we just had the budgeted numbers. And when you do that, and you look at our, say, Scenario A, based on the updated projections of revenue and the $3.1 million elapsed, we're looking at a shortfall or unfavorable position of about $6.3 million. So if we were to utilize fund balance to cover that shortfall, that would bring us down to just shy of 16% from where we are. We're a little over, as you know, a little over. I think we ended up 20%, 21% at the end of last fiscal year. So that would bring us down to about $20 million in ending fund balance. We ended last year with about $28.1 million in fund balance. 1.6 of that, we budgeted to expend. So we're looking at about $6 million, as you can see there, in usage of fund balance. Still puts us at a nice, healthy level of 16% if it comes to that. 16% is where our personally, I and we in the Budget Office always try to strive for, that's two months, that's the recommended GFOA level, is to have two months of fund reserves or fund balance. And certainly puts us at double what the floor is that was implemented by the mayor and the city council about a year or two ago at 8%. The next page is, oh, on that previous page, there's a note at the bottom. It doesn't, the revenue does not include anything we anticipate getting from FEMA. So if we are successful ultimately in getting, say, a million dollars in corporate fund revenue back through FEMA cares and the State Cures Act, then that improves our position even more, and would put us over 16% certainly if Scenario A comes to pass. As I've said before, we still believe we're sort of in the Scenario A, B range. Not a huge difference, 15.9 versus 15% fund balance ending, but certainly getting the FEMA money would help us out and get us closer to that 16% or potentially over the 16%.
Mr. Mayor.
And then the last page is, this is the last page, Alderman, then we can do questions if you don't mind. The last page is just an update of where we are with the COVID relief claim for cures and cares. We've already submitted almost $100,000 in requests for reimbursement to FEMA. This is for the electric and water funds over at the utility. We have an additional $250,000, most of which is corporate, just about ready to go out the door for reimbursement. And we are in the process of converting $14,000 in police department overtime over to the Fund 77, which is, would utilize a stream that's dedicated, COVID relief stream that's dedicated to the police department. So we're trying to utilize those areas anytime we can for expenses that make sense so that we can keep other monies like Cures Act funds free for general purposes, if it comes to the point where we can utilize that for more expenses and/or revenue shortfalls. We want to keep as much as we can for that. So we're continuing to gather information, and as we get that information and work with the departments, we'll continue submitting for reimbursement claims. That's all I have tonight. Are there any questions?
Alderman McMenamin.
Regarding reimbursement claims and federal relief, Mayor, you're aware of this because I think you wrote a letter to the National League of Cities regarding the Cures, or the Heroes Act. Now, the Cures Act is what got through the federal Congress, but what hasn't gotten through the federal Congress yet is the Heroes Act. And it, as introduced and passed by the House, it provided $1.5 trillion of relief to state and local governments, just a huge relief directed at municipal, state, and local governments. I saw on the news today that there's going to be a new effort to try to get a compromise on that Heroes Act. So that's another one of the unknowns that can significantly benefit our budget. And Bill, you haven't mentioned it yourself, but I know the mayor is very much aware of it and has been following it and has been doing what he can at the national level to let the municipal point of view be known to our state senators, our national senators and congressmen.
Yes, you're absolutely right, Alderman. Mayor Langfelder has told us, and I know he's said it publicly a few times, that he's doing everything that he can to try and access the entirety of the funds that are already out there, as well as get more funds allocated. And I don't know if anybody saw Capital Facts today. I was reading that earlier. And there's a push from everywhere, including the state of Illinois. The governor has said today that without federal intervention, that the state itself is looking at 5% to 10% in cuts. That's billions of dollars. And they're talking about a lot of layoffs and a lot of other cutbacks. So certainly, this is an isolated, in the city of Springfield, we're all facing it. And we, there is a big push to try and get some more flexibility and some more relief funds for governments because we've all been impacted so greatly with revenue.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Director, I appreciate the update this evening. What I'm concerned about is, and Alderman McMenamin's right, there could be some federal assistance coming, and that would be wonderful. And my main concern is if the revenue, because there's so many unknowns, if the revenue numbers don't increase, I'd like if you could give some thought and do some number crunching on how that could potentially impact next fiscal year. Because obviously, we're, we'd be taking the fund balance down from, what did you say, 20?
It'd be from around 20%, 21% down to about 16%.
16. We can't afford to do another drop the next fiscal year, and I know you know that. But if you guys, if you could, you and your staff could take a look at how that potentially could impact Nick's budget year, I think that'd give us at least a window into what's forthcoming. And I know there's a lot of unknowns, but the different scenarios would be helpful, I think, for us to look at.
You know, that's, you know, that's funny you used to say that. The mayor and I were just having this conversation just this morning about how we need to start looking forward to next year already because of all the unknowns that exist right now. And the mayor said it a million times. We've all said that we're trying to avoid the worst of the worst. We're trying to avoid furloughs. We're trying to avoid layoffs. And we really don't want to implement anything like that while there's still this number of unknowns out there. So we're sort of, I think, leaning, and Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're sort of leaning towards utilizing what we've done with the cutting back of expenses and fund balance and the FEMA reimbursements to try and get through this year. But we know, and he said it today, next year, we're not going to be able to do that. And we're going to start looking forward to next year here this month. Normally, we wouldn't do it towards the end of October, but we're going to start doing it now. So yes, we'll start looking at that. That's a very good point.
If you could involve us, you know, because.
Well, and you will be involved, right? So we'll keep you in the loop because we're all going to have to come together, put together the budget, and you'll have a pretty significant hand in that. So we'll keep you in the loop. Anytime we've got any updates or anything. Mayor wants me up here all the time giving you all updates, but certainly be happy to send any information that anybody wants at any time. Please feel free to give me a call if you want to sit down and talk about it and see, hey, what are you looking at? Let's sit down, or I can email, or whatever you want to do.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Alderman Proctor.
Yeah, any of that police overtime, is any of that COVID-related that could be claimed?
Yeah, the stuff that we're moving is COVID-related. Yes.
Like, you said, what, a million dollars overtime?
No, no, not a million in overtime. Yeah, no, no, not a million in overtime. We've had a lot of overtime, but it's not all COVID-related. It's not all claimable.
Okay.
That police, I think, was like, what's that number, 14,000 or something like that? We're just simply making sure that gets coded properly so we can utilize that stream that's dedicated for the police department.
All right, I miss Sergio.
We want to keep that separate from the other overtime.
All right, thanks.
I think one point on that is, Fire Chief Ryan, I don't know if he's in here, but he had mentioned that their overtime this year compared to previous years is an anomaly. So we're going to make that case for, to ask for reimbursement for that differential because he said it was pretty, you know, from year to year is pretty much plateaued, and then all of a sudden, it spiked up this year. So that lends itself to COVID, in our opinion.
Alderman Hanauer.
Well, that's kind of my question. Last year, we got hit with a pretty hefty bill at the end of the year of fire department overtime. So I don't think it was all just COVID. Somebody needs to look into this because we got, we had a new class that we brought on. Was it last year, year before last? And they said if we brought this class, if we brought this class on, it was going to cut down on the overtime. Well, apparently, it hasn't. And I mean, we can't have another million-dollar overtime bill at the end of the year. It just, it can't happen. So with that, here's the man of the moment. So.
Johnny on the spot, or Alan on the spot.
Yeah, while he's walking up here, the mayor's right. There was a period where there was a nice plateau of overtime. It was as expected. But it was actually, I think, last year, Mayor, when we saw the big jump, and that's continued into this year. So I'll let the chief step in and give his.
Sorry to blindside you.
No, it's all good. It's a good question. So last year was, in our opinion, an anomaly. It spiked up because of injuries. I call it the perfect storm. You had military injuries and increased sick time. And that has not, in and of itself, changed. What is correct, and the mayor and I talked about, is a lot of our, a lot of our overtime this year, we still have people out injured. We still have long-term injuries that we normally don't have. But we have definitely seen an increase because, and here's the hard part with COVID. It's real easy if we ground somebody and say, you can't come to work, and we hire people back to fill that because they've been grounded for COVID. But what is impossible to know is when somebody has a child at home that maybe is, well, they were exposed, or we have to get them tested, or we don't know, those one- or two-day events where they're picking up the phone and calling in. And that is what, if you look at our sick time, I'm not talking about long-term illnesses. I'm not talking about military. We track all of that. We tracked all of that well, not for long enough, in my opinion, but I've only had control over that for the last few years. But really, over the last six years, we've tracked that all very well. So it's very easy. When you see your average sick time, that's people that call up, can't come into work today. When you see your average sick time spike exponentially like it has this year, how many of those are related to concern for the situation we're in now? Not necessarily, I've been quarantined and I can't come to work. That's the difficult part. And from a reimbursable, you know, from a reimbursement standpoint, we track, obviously, if somebody's quarantined, we track it. But if they're just calling in sick because they want to get their kid tested, or they're, then that's, we don't track that. That's not, but you can see it in the numbers. It has to have happened.
Well.
Go ahead, Alderman.
And, I mean, my point is, is we cannot have another large overtime bill at the end of the year. I mean, especially adding 20, 20 more firefighters or whatever it was of that last class. I, we just, you know, under normal circumstances, it wouldn't, it probably wouldn't be a big deal. But, but it is. It's going to be. And I'm not worried about this year. I'm terribly worried about next year and the year after. Because as we start spending down that fund balance, we don't have anything to fall back on. And thank God, we did get it built up for this. But, you know, we've got to look at all the overtime. And if we've got an area that's going crazy with overtime, we got to, we got to come up with a solution to nip that. Because we just, we got to look at it for next year.
Right.
Because the overtime they're spending this year might cost somebody a job next year. You never know, you know? I hate to say that, but that's, we're not going to have the luxury of having a big fund balance.
I mean, most of, most of our overtime is driven by the collective bargaining agreement and the minimum manning. I mean, that's, it's, there's very, it's a very small percentage. We have special teams. We have things that occur outside. But even the special teams, that's in, that's in the contract, how often they meet. So any, any change to that would have to be negotiated.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief or Director McCarthy? We'll have an open discussion at the end of the meeting. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Yep, thank you. Anything else, Director McCarthy?
Nope, I don't have anything else. If anybody needs anything, please give me a call. Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the September 1st, 2020 minute.
Second.
Of the regular city council meeting and approve the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this city council meeting.
I move.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this city council meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Clerk, on 2020-340, I will be present.
No.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
McMenamin.
This is a thank you, real brief, a thank you to Public Works and Nate Bottom and David Whitworth. We've got two ordinances on consent agenda that gets the process started more vigorously for the bridge over the Jacksonville Branch Creek, which is a main entrance to Sherwood subdivision. That bridge has been in disrepair above grade for about nine or 10 years. But our Public Works folks have been prudent with money. They wait for the level of the condition to degrade in the structural way to the point where we can get, we can max out on state funding. So our Public Works engineers have been following this carefully, and they have to coordinate with county and the IDOT. And now we're at that point where we can get this at the top of the list and get it done. And thank you also for taking into consideration the 1,500 property owners in Sherwood subdivision that, where you took their points of view into consideration in the design of the above ground to make it a first-rate bridge. So thanks a lot, Nate Bottom and your, your staff at Public Works.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
I'll move.
They're moved and seconded. Any discussion? Without, again, showing Alderwoman DeSensio as a present vote, is that correct, on 2020-340? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Then ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda number 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-430, 2020-049, 2020-067, 2020-153, 2020-207, 2020-273, 2020-289, 2020-315, 2020-330, 2020-331, 2020-332, 2020-333, 2020-334, and 2020-346 remain tabled in committee. Is there a motion on, to pull one of those or any of those out of committee? Alderman Proctor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pull out 2020-334 for the debate agenda.
Second? They're moving second to pull out 2020-334 and place on the debate agenda. Any discussion? Do we have to do a roll call vote on that? Roll call vote. Mr. Clerk?
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
He said no.
Alderman Donlin.
No.
Alderman Hanauer.
No.
Eight ayes and no, two noes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Sounds like we should have had the animal control ordinance out with that dog barking in the background. That was good.
That's coming up. Any other motions for those, the ordinances in committee? The next item on the agenda is 2020-314, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement of cooperation between Sangamon County, Illinois Board of Health for animal control services within the city of Springfield limits, and authorizing payment. We're going to move that back to committee?
Yes, I've been asked to hold that for a couple of weeks. So we'll move it back to committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Next ordinance is 2020-334, an ordinance authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with Chesterfield Fairing LTD for financial assistance for the property located at 518, 520, 524, East. 520, 524 East Monroe Street, utilizing central area tax increment finance funds through the Office of Planning and Economic Development for an amount not to exceed $3,150,000. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Proctor?
I've got two amendments to offer for this. I've been talking with the developer and the unions and others involved in this. The first amendment is, you know, a signed affirmation that Rick Lawrence Siciliano, Inc. or Bright New Day Investments LLC will not be involved in the project and will not benefit from the project, see affirmation, like that'd be part of the amendment. So that's the first one.
Could you, could you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
Yeah, you all have a written copy.
Okay.
Amendment number one is Rick Lawrence Siciliano, Inc. Can I continue?
Yeah.
Bright New Investments LLC will not be involved in the project or benefit from the project, then see the signed affirmation from Rick Lawrence saying that he will not be involved in the project.
So we can have a motion on the amendment, and that pertains to the affirmation document that Rick Lawrence had signed, saying he's not going to be involved with the project, and making that part of the developer's agreement?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second, the motion for amendment number one.
Is there any questions on that amendment?
Yes, I'd like to put a substitute motion on, on that. I'd like to add to that motion that if Mr. Lawrence somehow comes suspiciously involved in this project, that the, that the funds for the $3 million, $3.1 million in TIF funds will be withdrawn. That's part, that's my adjustment to that amendment.
I agree with that, yeah.
Was suspiciously, can you define that, Mr. Corporation Counsel?
Put it any way you want it.
We, we, if I might, we do have an addendum that does incorporate the reference to Mr. Lawrence's Bright New Day, so we have that prepared. We can add language that says a breach of that addendum would require repayment of money or no money at all.
Perfect, thank you, that, that'll work.
So we don't need an amendment? Is that what you're saying?
No, I, I think it's fine to make it part of the record, but we had already, we already have an addendum that addresses incorporating that language. So we can, we can go ahead and act on that. First would be to vote on the amendment to the amendment, what I understand, Alderman Redpath, to ask additional language be presented. So if you vote in order, it would be on the amendment to the amendment, then as, as modified. And is, is there also another?
On that, what's the clarity for that amendment?
Okay, it is my, okay, I apologize. It is my understanding that the original motion was to incorporate the representation by Mr. Lawrence with respect to Bright New Day and Siciliano, Inc., that they would not participate in any manner or benefit in any manner vis-a-vis this project. It's my understanding that the proposed modification to that is that in the event of a breach of that, then that would either cause the money, TIF money not to be available or to, to be able to recover it.
Okay.
If that's, if that summarizes it, that's my understanding of the discussion.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, I, thank you, and I appreciate.
Pardon me, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the, the amendments on this, but everybody knows you can run down the Secretary of State's office and you can do an LLC with your family member or whatever, and they still are involved in it. You're, you're involved in it even though it's a family member, and, and I don't think there's any, I, I would assume that would be able to get through court. I don't think it's any, any, there's any doubt that we're very concerned about him on this project. And, so I, I don't know how we go around that. But they could run down to the Secretary of State's office tomorrow and fill out an LLC where we don't get to see, see people in it and, and be a part of this project.
I'd ask Tom Lee if he could unmute the developer, and maybe he can answer that question directly? And that's Tom Lee from JCT Development.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Alder, Aldermen and Alderwomen. I don't know how more plainly to state it, and I understand your concerns, I, I respect the basis of your concerns. I can tell you, we have no interest, no desire, no hidden agenda, no reason to mince words. Rick Lawrence isn't going to be part of our development. We've got him to sign an affidavit and affirmation, which we've agreed to attach, and one of the Aldermen wanted more language in there, which we have no objection to. So, you know, I don't know how more plainly to say it, we have no endgame, we're not trying to trick anybody, we're not trying to play games, we just want to build a successful project, and it's clear that Rick couldn't do it, and it's clear that no one on this board wants nothing to do with it. So I don't know how better to say it, but we attach an affirmation, I've said it on the record every time asked, and you, you've put enough protections in this agreement that I think would cover anyone's concerns. I don't know how more plainly to say it, folks.
Alderman Proctor?
He has nothing to do with our business, he's not a hidden partner, we don't plan to make him a hidden partner, we have no hidden agenda here. We just want to build a successful project in Dan House Springfield, and that's not going to be with Rick Lawrence, Siciliano, or any business entity, association, family member related to Rick Lawrence.
Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, Ralph, to your concern, I think Alderman Redpath's amendment kind of helps encapsulize all that, because I did have a question about family member involvement and whatnot as well. But if you want to further amend Alderman Redpath's amendment to my amendment, including family members, I guess you could do that or something, but there's gotta be, I've been dealing with this in the mayor and Zirko and Val and OpD, we've been dealing with this for more than four years, and it just needs to end. And I've talked to Tom Lee for the past three weeks, four weeks, I got to know him pretty well, and I'm beginning, I trust him, I think he's gonna, he's gonna do what he says, and I don't think Rick's gonna be involved, and I don't think a family member's gonna be involved in this thing. So as the whole Alderman for this project, I'm pretty confident that Rick Lawrence or any family member, or any way that he could be attached to it, is not gonna be involved in this project.
And let me make clear also, I'm sorry to jump in, that we have no prior relationship with Mr. Lawrence before coming to town, we have no relationship to anyone in his family before coming to town, we have no relationship with any of the business entities that he had before we purchased, noted on this building, there's no side letters, side agreements before we, we got involved, we're trying to get this thing passed, so there's no prior relationship.
Any other discussion on the amendment as amended? All in favor of the amendment as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So amendment number two.
Oh, okay. We gotta vote on the original amendment?
Yeah.
With the amendment attached?
That was it, was it? Yeah.
If the, if the intent was to vote on both, the, the, the original amendment with that language, then the record should be clear that you've adopted both of those, if there's any.
Okay. Alderman Proctor?
All, amendment number two, and I'm sure legal counsel can finesse this, make it proper. All past due bills and obligations owed to unions and contractors will be paid within 90 days after ordinance is signed and approved by the mayor. So that'd be about December, January timeframe.
Second, the motion.
Discussion?
Was that coordinated with Mr. Lee's?
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Well, let me just say, as I indicated, we have agreements, proposed settlement agreements out to every union, and our, our settlement agreement indicates that we are willing to pay any past due benefits owed to any union member and any direct costs associated with the union's collection, i.e. legal fees, any accounting fees, so any direct cost to, to the union. So I just want that to be clear. In terms of the timing, once again, we, we want to be as transparent as possible. There was a lot of talk at this commission meeting about how COVID has affected, you know, the, the city. I can tell you that COVID has also affected the national markets. Prior to COVID, we had several banks interested in this project, we began talking to them, they are interested, we, we plan to pay back the money, and the developer's agreement clearly states that we cannot start the project until everyone's paid back. So when Alderman Proctor indicated 90 days, our goal is to get this financing done as soon as possible. If it's before 90 days, we'd love it, but we're, we're dealing with very volatile capital markets right now, and we'll, we'll be in touch with Alderman Proctor, I, I'll give monthly reports of where we're at with the financing. All open books are provided, but to say precisely 90 days, provided the council is aware, that I may come back and say, hey, this is where we're at, we've gotten free commitments, we're working through it, this is not going to be an issue where anything's hidden from the council or the Aldermen, but when you say 90 days, I don't want to be looking at you guys and have frustrated faces 89 days from now when I say I need a couple more weeks, provided we're going down that road. I understand we can't get started with the project, and the agreement says we cannot until everyone's paid. So I want to make clear, our goal is to pay each and every person that's owed money, despite the fact we have no legal obligation to do so. But 90 days, we're gonna do our very best, we may need a slight extension depending on how capital markets react.
Alderman Hanauer?
No.
Okay, Alderman Redpath?
I can affirm that, I've refinancing several of my properties, and I want to tell you that, that we've had to wait months to get this done. That, that's because the, because the COVID has slowed the whole thing down, so, thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
I've sent some questions to Corporation Counsel, me and Alderman Proctor talked a little bit, and, and, you know, I, just for me to feel comfortable for doing this, I just have some, some questions that, that I would like addressed, you know, as, as trying to be a good steward of the people's money. It appears, and I had to make my little notes, I wish I had my suit jacket on to pull it out like Chuck, but, you know, it, it appears, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that government financing in some, some way, shape, or form, whether it's our TIF or, or historic sites, funds, is making up this project. Looking at the timeline from his numbers, you know, we like 80,000 to like 115 or something like that, you know, it, it doesn't appear that, that enough is coming back to us, you know, on, on this, on this deal. You know, we got so many things coming up, we got this homeless thing. I don't know how we can do this. I'm just being honest. I mean, it's, it's bothering me, you know, that, that we're gonna push and give $3 million or whatever to this, and people are gonna sleep on the streets this, this winter.
On the, Alderman Hanauer?
If I could follow up with, and that's, you're right, Sean, and one of the concerns I have is that based on their own, on their own document, they're paying 80,000 after the, after the project's over, they're paying 80,000 a year in taxes. If you, if you equate that, that puts the building valuation about 2.6 million. Now, if, in order for them, they're, they said the evaluation of the building is, is over 7 million, so let's just figure 7 million, they'd be paying around 180, and my maths, you know, I, I just kind of threw this together, 180,000 a year for, for a building that's worth 7 million. And I, I go back to what I said last time, we're, we're putting 4.1 million, we're putting more than 50% of what the building's worth in the building. And when we first came on this council, we had a, we had a tough vote on, on Bluffstone. I, I think we all, well, the people that were here remember it, and I, I just, I remember it just something, I just didn't have a good feeling on it, and, and, I mean, just with these numbers, that's, that's where I am here, you know? I want the building to go, but we're putting $4 million in this, and, and we're only gonna get back, it, it'll take 50 years to get, to get it back on their, on, on that 80,000. That, that doesn't, that doesn't jive.
On the Bluffstone, that was a new construction project with regards to that, but with regards to the assessed evaluation of the property itself, it's probably based on where it's at in its present state, is that correct, Corporation Counsel? And then, so that's what you're reading into it, is that evaluation at that point in time, so be reevaluated once the TIF expires, is my understanding. And with regards to the developer, they get the funds as the taxes are generated from that. So I think we did a scenario, do you remember what that was on the, with regards to the break even?
Yeah, the, the, these kind of projects are never always going to be, just because of the sheer complexity and taking an old building and adapting it, I think everybody is pretty aware of that. I do think that the estimates in the pro forma are low, I think the taxes will be higher than what's shown in there, however, the life of the project would be far in excess of the period of the remaining nine years of the TIF. It's a project that probably has a lifespan minimally of 30 or 40 years. So you have to, I think, from a purely business point of view, look at a longer term as opposed to having buildings not done. Because that's, that's the choice that unfortunately, with the older, larger buildings downtown, absent the ability to make them have some economic sense, they're just, they just won't be developed. It's just, it's just the reality.
Yeah, based on the write-up, it says right here, this was one of the questions Alderman Redpath actually asked, what is the current amount of the TIF, which was according to the cash balance was 700, $7,868. Then the other part was how would this be split up? And so the TIF funds will be used only after the project is fully completed, so the developers are putting together the financing, completing the project, paying all the debt on their own dime, and then moving forward. So they'll be reimbursed to the tune of $3.1 million roughly, paid over the life of the TIF, which is additional 10 years, and it's estimated at that point would be $1,54,463. And then so, based on these new taxes generated by the project, which is estimated at that point in time, in nine years would be the 2.2 million, that's where we get the amount to pay for it. And then the new additional real estate tax after that would be generated by the project over the next 30-year life, is estimated to be 3.5 to 4 million. So the answer to your question would be, my estimation is, really, this project does take part of the TIF each year, but the taxes that they generate, or they're paying, goes back to pay them back, so it's their own money being generated, pay themselves back. But moving forward, we do recoup, and we have a finished project. The real question we should be asking, say we don't vote this in, what's next? I think the SJR asked that last time we pulled the project off the table, they said, okay, what's going to be next? So I think two years later, we're looking at what's next, and then if we decide not to do it, I guess that's really gonna be a severe question, because this is, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and I think we're a very blessed community for a number of reasons, but this shows you the strength of Springfield, where you have an outside developer wanting to invest in Springfield, and that's one of the reasons I believe that we're number one post-pandemic, because we're, you know, sad part is, the market's depressed within downtown Springfield, and so it is, you pointed it out, is that we are at the, kind of near the bottom of the buyer's market, so now's the time to buy, we have an investor willing to do that and invest, and that in turn will be a domino impact for not just this building project being done, that's sat there, as Alderman Proctor said, for four years, but the domino impact and how it will influence other development, especially during a pandemic. But I don't know if Abby wants to come up and share any additional thoughts to that.
Mr. Mayor, before that, can, can I make a few comments, Mr. Alderman?
Sure.
You know, I, before Corey Job left Ward 6, I remember one of his last statements he made in talking about downtown TIF, he said, he said, "I'm not gonna vote for any more downtown TIF money unless we're creating housing units." I think he was thinking to the fact that we've put money into parking lots, we've put money into museums, we've put money into maintenance of buildings, and, but what he wanted to see was create housing units for downtown, because we've got all this problem with office buildings that are emptied out, and will continue to empty out in this post-COVID environment. So I think what we're trying to do here is, is save three buildings that otherwise have no value, they'll be, they're knockdowns if we don't save them, and we're creating foot traffic with 44, not luxury apartments, but medium-priced rental apartments. And that's a big change from what the Rick Lawrence project was. He was going luxury, this is going modestly priced apartment units, I think it's 44 of them, and that doesn't include the commercial space and maybe some other leftover space that will be developed. So this is one of those situations where we gotta think long-term, and by the way, these monies here can't be used for any homeless situation right now, and they, they don't get distributed, this TIF money doesn't get distributed until the project is 100% complete, which could be two years from now, and hopefully by then we're over the, this COVID mess that we're in. So I just wanted to get that out there. Thanks, Abby, for waiting.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that it's pretty common for adaptive reuse buildings like downtown to require a pretty hefty subsidy, that's why they're so difficult to That's why they're so difficult to do. If you think back as the Chamber project or the Spur project that added some housing downtown and created some office space at the old Methodist church, that had a really good mix of TIF dollars and tax credits, and that's the only way they were able to make that work. This is a really similar scenario where we're seeing over 40%. 40% is the typical gap for an adaptive reuse project like this. I think this one's a little bit higher than 40, but they're huge buildings, so that, you know, that kind of makes sense to me. So I'd just like to say that that's common in these downtown adaptive reuse projects. And also Alderman McMiniman had a really good point about bringing those additional residential properties online. Every study we see downtown says that we need more people. We need more people living there, creating foot traffic, going to the shops. We've seen that relying on the tourism industry is not always sustainable for us. So having that 24-hour residential component is huge for downtown. We've had conversations with developers recently. I mean, we have people who are talking to us about what the market is like downtown every week. I'm surprised at how many new business calls we get in during times like this, but we were just on the phone with somebody last week, they're asking about what is the 24-hour situation downtown? Like who's down there? Who's living down there? Who can we expect to see coming to our restaurant in the evening for dinner? Not just the lunchtime office traffic, but the people who are out, you know, walking the neighborhood and going to the shops, and this is really going to add to that. So that's all I really wanted to add on this project.
Alderman DeSenzio?
Thank you, Mayor. I think our hesitation here is that we all have a little bit of a bad taste in our mouth over this project. I think that everyone wants to see something happen to these buildings. We don't want them knocked down and we don't want nothing to happen. But, you know, $1,500 a month in rent in Springfield is not affordable housing. That's twice my mortgage payment, and I live a few blocks from Washington Park. So, you know, I think that we're, I think we're just expressing our caution and we feel like we've been burned on this project, not once, but a couple times. But I also think that we do want to see this completed and come to fruition. We're just a little gun shy.
Alderman Repath?
You know, what we have TIF funds for is just this, and I understand, Alderman DeSenzio hit it on the head, we got burned on this thing by a poison pill and that was Rick Lawrence. We've got the guy out of it. And I understand there's still skepticism about people thinking he's going to sneak in the back door someplace, but, you know, if he does and we find out about it, they're going to lose their money. The bottom line is that Springfield's dying on the vine. Two major restaurants have left downtown in the last couple of weeks, and frankly, it's, we need to do something to help stimulate downtown Springfield. It's very important that, we understand it's a lot of money over what we're supposed to give, but we have to start someplace and this place has got to be it. $1,500, I understand you think is high. I don't think it's high. I know that there's other apartments downtown relatively close to that, around $1,000, but that's not a lot of money. When they were talking $2,500 a month, that was ridiculous. And I talked to, every business person I talked to said that the numbers don't work and you're never going to make it work. We need to follow up with this. We need to start someplace. The poison pill's gone, fellas, ladies and gentlemen, they're gone. And the unions are going to be made whole, and we have a contractor here that is convinced that he thinks he can make this thing work. We need to give him a shot. We need to try to make this work for city of Springfield. And believe me, I screamed and yelled just as loud as all of you. I wanted this thing stopped and we found a compromise and I think we need to take it. It's important for Springfield before we can't recover downtown. And like the mayor said, there's empty buildings all over downtown. This is a start and we got to start someplace. I think it's important.
Alderman Proctor?
I never want to correct Alderwoman DeSenzio, but I don't think $1,500 is the rent. I think it's like in the $1,000 to $1,200 range in the pro forma, so just wanted to add that.
Still not affordable housing.
That's, it's market rate.
Alderman Donlan?
Thank you, Mayor. To the amendment, the amendment clearly states, member two clearly states that all past dues and obligations owed to the unions and contractors will be paid within 90 days. I don't think anybody in this room, based on the conversations we've had many, many times, wants anything but that, because that's been a major bone of contention. However, I do want to remind all of you that one of the reasons why this has such a sour taste in all of our mouths is because nearly $1.2 million was used for something else other than what it was supposed to be used for. And I talked to one of the union representatives, I think it was yesterday, it was yesterday afternoon, early this morning, and he informed me that he has people that, members that are retired that are still owed money from prior projects, from the prior developer. And really what I'm getting at is, to the amendment that deals with this particular issue, someone is obligated to pay those requirements presently. And I believe it's the past developer, it's pretty clear. And, you know, if we head down this route, doesn't the developer get off scot-free?
Well, I'd let Tom Lee speak to that. Here's the options, option, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Option one is what we have in front of us, which pays everybody, pays all the back bills and everything else. Option two is the one where you foreclose. Nobody wins. Everybody loses. And so it makes it harder to develop. And so that's the other option, but I'd let the developer speak to that.
I've learned that when I look in my rearview mirror, I crash into the pole in front of me. Guys, I didn't create this problem. Which one to solve the problem? You know, I'm not looking to hurt anybody, I'm just looking to help folks. As indicated, we have no legal obligation, no moral obligation actually even, to pay monies that we, for services that we didn't get. Whether that means that somebody before us gets lucky or someone, you know, once again, that's not for me to decide. But it seems to me, we got a gun pointed at us and we didn't commit a crime. We're trying to make this right, and I understand everybody's caution, I understand everyone's trepidation, but it wasn't caused by us. Where he'd have solved a problem, we have faith in the city of Springfield, we have other investments in town, which evidences our faith in the city of Springfield. I'm sorry that the city got burned, I'm sorry that the unions got taken advantage of. If that's what happened, I mean, I'm not part of that, so I don't know. But the bottom line is, we didn't cause that. And so I can't tell you what's going to happen to him getting scot-free, I don't know if that's the case. The guy's losing his, he's lost his investment, he lost a whole bunch of money. This isn't a unique situation in a lot of the markets we deal in. Some people get over their skis. Seems like the guy got over his skis. I mean, losing his business and his inability to work in town anymore because he owes the unions money? I don't know, I'm not looking to penalize the guy, but it seems to me to be. He's not getting off scot-free. But that being said, we don't owe anybody any money in your town, but we'd like to pay it because we understand that's our path forward.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to state upfront, Alderwoman DeSenzio said it better than I would, how much I would like to see this project go forward. I love downtown Springfield. I've worked down here for most of my professional career, it's been downtown, and it's a great place to be. That said, I have confidence that there will be, we don't have two options in front of us. There may be an option C. Mayor, as you continually point out, Springfield is highlighted as a place to come to post-pandemic and that there are people who will be coming to look and invest here. And I think the ask on this one, $3.1 million on top of $1 million that we've already invested into this project, I think the ask is too high. For me, it's too much money to come from our TIF, from our city, and, you know, I wasn't here when the original deal went south. I'd like to clarify one thing, though, it's not the unions that were put out, it was the people who did the work who had their money stolen from them. I mean, we're kind of, people have been dancing around that topic, people had their wages stolen from them, their contractual obligated wages. You know, and I'm hearing, you know, I think this is going to happen and we're going to try to get it done in 90 days, and I want to vote for this. I want this to go forward, I want to see this happen, but I'm kind of, my instincts tell me that there's still question marks around it and the ask on this is too high. $3 million is more than I can be comfortable with. And so I just want to be clear, with all due respect, Andrew, because I would love to see this, I would love to see these get finished, but I can't vote for this project.
Mr. Mayor? Alderman Proctor?
Just want to, I see your point, I totally do, because $3.2 million is a lot. And I got two things, I guess, that respond to that. Part of it, if this project doesn't go through, it won't be there, because part of the money that's being paid to pay for this project is going to be generated from the project itself. And so it's not like we're picking to spend $3.2 million on this versus Sean's homeless shelter. You know? So it's, to me, part of the project is going to largely pay for itself with the new increment. And then the other part is that downtown is suffering right now and we need that domino effect. And I feel like this is a domino effect on this one, either the good way or the bad way. The good way is we get these additional housing units and get more people downtown, or the bad way, it doesn't happen and people, more developers start getting a bad taste of downtown and don't want anything to do with it. Don't want anything to do with TIF, don't want to do anything, anything, the city incentives because of stuff like this. And unfortunately, we've had to go through this. And I didn't support it in the beginning, but I found a way to make it work, everybody agreed, and the parties are butting heads, came to an agreement. So, but I understand your hesitation, I do. But, and also, the pro forma, it says it's about a $15 million project. So we can all go back and forth saying the valuation of the billion's too low or it's too high or whatever, but it's a $15 million project. So $3.2 million out of it, another four, we'll go up to $4.2 for the other one. It's still under 30% of what we typically do for TIF.
Yeah, one thing I'll echo what Alderwoman Conley said, I think most of us inherited this project when we got here in 2015. The other thing I'll clarify is with regards to Rick Lawrence, it was for the benefits, I believe, for the workers, I think they were paid their salary. And unfortunately, the bank, the previous bank before this bank had acquired that debt, seized his accounts. And so he did have set aside $400,000, whatever the case may be, and they seized it and used it to, you know, to pay down their debt. And so that's, you know, I think Tom Lee probably could speak to that with these type of situations, but it's rare, very rare where you have someone coming in that's willing to pay the back debt, and that's one of the requirements that we had on the front end. And that's why we felt it was important to do that, so on the back end, the TIF would not be paid until the back end. And again, it's their taxes, their own taxes that they'll generate off the development that help pay for it. I can't remember the exact number, maybe Abby can tell us, I think it's $350,000 per month, and that will be paid after the project's done, project's completed, and then that's when the developer will start being, getting reimbursed. But a portion of that will be their own taxes, I think over $100,000 or whatever the case may be, or say $80,000 per year, if you clarify those numbers with regards to the payback, I think that's important. And then the other thing to point out, the reason the TIF's in place is because we hear it all the time. You know, where'd Portillo's go? Where'd everybody else go? They like to go out west. This is how we get development happening where we need it, in the inner city. And so once you start doing one project, that leads to a subsequent project, and that's what we're trying to make happen. So Abby, I didn't know if you would be able to split out that reimbursement per month?
I don't, I can't do it per month, but I can do it per year.
Oh, per year, sorry.
According to the, luckily, I'm not going to have to do the paperwork every month. The city should reimburse the developer 30%, no more than 30% of the actual construction costs that are eligible. This is according to the redevelopment agreement, I believe you all have a copy of that, it's on the bottom of page three if you want to check it, but, so it'll be $350,000 annually until the last year of the TIF, and at that point, we would reimburse whatever remaining balance the redeveloper was eligible for. The contract specifically disallows any funds for property acquisition, project equity, or any of the prior unpaid liens. And then, as I showed you my amazing spreadsheet a couple of weeks ago, I'm going to be checking back and making sure we're not double paying for any of the construction costs that are eligible.
Alderman Repath?
That was part of my next question, Abby, are you going to be overseeing our side of this, watching how that spending's going?
I don't know if I'm going to be here for 10 more years, but maybe.
I hope I'm alive in 10 more years. But, and to the developer, the bank was not overseeing Mr. Lawrence and his project, and that's how he got into trouble. Do you have somebody from the bank or somebody that's going to be overseeing this project, Mr. Lee?
Alderman Repath, I've never seen a real development project with a competent bank not have an inspector come out and inspect the progress completion during a project. Every project I've ever been on, we submit a draw request with a percentage of completion. A bank official comes out, they send a bank inspector, and he determines whether or not we're at that level of completion, and then funds on it. And I'm certain that's the process that we'll have here. And furthermore, as I volunteered last time, and I'll volunteer again, I'll provide the aldermen and alderwomen and the draw we submit every month, and I invite any one of the aldermen or alderwomen or anyone you assign to come to our draw meeting, to come to the project during that inspection when the bank comes. I do a monthly draw meeting where I provide a draw request to the bank. Bank inspector comes and does a walkthrough. You can have a building official come, you can have an alderman come, you can have anybody you want part of the process. So, yeah, we do plan to have oversight, because that's just how banks work, they love their own oversight.
Mr. Lee, thank you for that, but I just, you understand that that wasn't done under Mr. Lawrence, and that's why we're concerned about that, and we want to make-
No wonder why the bank failed, sir. No wonder why the bank couldn't complete a project. If they don't watch what they're doing with their own money, shame on them.
Yes, exactly. And then my second question is to Corporation Counsel. We submitted letters to the Department of Labor and the Illinois Attorney General's Office, have we heard anything back from them?
There's been no response yet.
I really hope that they decide to pick up the mail and look at it, because this is very important to us, because somebody needs to be held accountable for the missing money that is missing out of this project. And if they do an investigation, I think you're going to, they're going to find an eye-opening situation. Thank you.
Alderman Henner?
Yeah, and I just want to make sure, you know, somebody mentioned that there was a contractor or somebody that was looking into things, but it's my understanding that because it's TIF, that all this has to be, everything has to be bid out, all the rules, all the TIF rules are going to be followed, there's not going to, we're not grooving a certain, you know, contractor or whatever. Am I, everything's going to be followed, I'm assuming, since that's the rule.
Abby will be able to answer that?
Might as well just sit down there.
Yeah, I haven't, I mean, we'll follow the contract, so whatever the redevelopment agreement says, and that language is in our boilerplate, I'm not going to swear to what page it's on, because I'm not, I'm not to that part yet, but typically, all TIF projects are put out to bid, we follow the purchasing rules, and then we, I would like to follow up on the monthly draws, because not only is Mr. Lee saying it's permissible for us to look at those, but it's a requirement, he's going to have to submit copies of all those draw requests. And also you will submit documentation that all the folks on the job are paid prevailing wage, and he will comply with the local labor requirement.
I feel good knowing you're on top of this, Abby.
Thank you.
And then, just to clarify, Rick Lawrence provided that, I think Tom Lee can speak to that, that work had been done at the site.
He did. He provided draw requests, and then we did confirm all those, they were signed by his architect on the project. He also submitted documentation that he paid prevailing wage. I believe the prevailing wage violations happened after we were done reimbursing him. I couldn't speak to that part.
Alderman Conley, then Alderwoman Turner?
Abby, please don't go away. I have a question for Abby, if I could, real quickly. Because I just need some clarification here, you're talking about monthly draws, but my understa, does that still apply if we're looking at not reimbursing until the project's completed?
Yeah, so that's what happened with the Hy-Vee project. They had to submit every draw request, so the general on the project submitted their draw request to the developer at the Hy-Vee, which Hy-Vee was the developer, and then I received copies of all that. We also received any invoices for professional services, all that, I've got a stack of papers in the office. But that happened monthly, even though they get paid out annually, like this project will be, based on the increment they generate now.
Okay, so you don't wait until the end of the year to review? Okay, so, so you, you don't wait until the end of the year to review things?
No, that, that would be just a mess.
Right, hence you're not going to stay here for 10 more years.
Yeah.
Which I don't encourage, by the way.
Alderman Turner?
So, I think this whole project is a, is a big mess. And I know that Alderman Redpath was talking about, glad that, you know, you're on top of it and all that, but who was on top of it before? It's this same scenario, same situation, same people, same office, same everything. And I think that we have to be very, we have to really watch how we deal with our TIF money because it's not, I think that we have always treated TIF as an open checkbook. That it, you know, the money's just there, just, you know, write, write the checks and, and the money will just keep flowing. So I think that we have to be very careful about TIF money and how we spend it and the accountability that goes along with it. So we're already hearing this developer say, Alderman, I have to applaud Alderman Proctor because you really worked hard on this and you put a lot of time, a lot of energy into it. And you worked with all of the affected individuals to try to, you know, bring people together for a resolution. And so tonight, we have a, an amendment that says everybody's going to get paid within 90 days. And then the first thing we have coming back is, well, I don't know if it's going to be 90 days. I'm going to try to do 90 days, but things happen. We may not be able to do it 90 days. So, you know, already tonight, when we just, we just voted on and passed an amendment, the developer is saying, I don't know if I can live up to that amendment. So why did we pass the amendment if, if he doesn't know if he can live up to it? The other, the other thing I, I just want to throw out there, if in fact this does pass, the resolution that was passed a month or so ago, the anti-racism, our community investment resolution, it, there is some language in there that talks about what developers that are using TIF funds need to do. So I, I hope that everyone is making this developer aware of his responsibility as it relates to that new resolution. So I'm, I'm very clear that there's language in there that talks about development and, and how monies flow. So we, we need to, when we're talking about holding people accountable and accountability, we need to ensure that the developer is also aware of that piece of it. And I would encourage Abby or whoever's responsible to include that language in the boilerplate of the developer's agreement. I don't know if you've already done that, I'm assuming not.
Corporation Counsel, what's our agreement?
Yeah, it has our standard EEOC affirmative action requirements to solicit minority and female-owned business enterprises. We follow all of the proper, both federal and state guidelines.
I understand that. However, that's the standard guidelines. However, there was very specific language that was included in that resolution that spoke to TIF projects. So I, I'm asking that that language and the intent of that-
We'll go back and review it to make sure that it's consistent.
Yeah, that, that, the intent of that language gets included in the boilerplate, in the boilerplate language of the developer's agreement. It makes me kind of nervous when you say it's consistent. It, it should be consistent because it was passed in the resolution, so. So I just want that included in the boilerplate. Because, I guess, I, there was a lot of very specific language included in that resolution, and I don't want it to just go away and be forgotten because nobody thinks about including it in our boilerplate and in our standard operating procedures. I didn't mean to hijack your ordinance to talk about that.
Alderman Redpath? Or, I'm sorry, Alderman Proctor?
I don't think we vote on amendment number two yet, right?
It is, no, it's on discussion.
Good, so we haven't voted, okay, cool. You want to provide an amendment for that, for what you're talking about? More than happy.
I'm sorry?
More than happy to include an amendment on what you're talking about to make sure that's in there as well.
Before you go forward on that, let me just say that part of the path going forward was our agreement to keep many of the same subcontractors that were already on the job, employed on the job.
Right.
And I can say that it's our, our goal to make sure that all of the, not only unions that, and the union workers that, that were affected, but also to go back to the companies and make them whole. And part of that path forward is to try to keep as many of those guys that were on the project, on the project to completion. So that will, in a sense, limit our ability to go out to new, to new subcontractors and trades. And I just want to make sure that's not a violation before we get started. Because if I'm required to do that, it may mean that some of the people that have already been impacted negatively may wind up being, for lack of a better term, pumped from the job.
So, I'm sorry.
Yes, Alderman Turner?
So, so speaking to that comment, is this project a continuation project or is it a new project? I think there needs to be some clarification with regard to that because what I, what I just heard was that this is a continuation project and it, and it's, it just, things just kind of move on with the same subs and everything just kind of continues on as if nothing happened. Or is it a new project? If it's a new, if it's a-
Let me make it clear, if it's a new project, it would be incredibly simple for me, which would mean that I have no obligation to pay everyone back. We foreclosed the building out, we wouldn't pay any of the subcontractors, we have no legal requirement to pay any of the unions, and we use the money that we'd save, the 1.2 million, to finish the one building, finance that, move to the second, and move to the third. That's a very, very simple thing for us to do, and it's a simple, clear path to succeed. That being said, we wanted to make everyone whole, and the way to do that is to try to get this, you know, project approved. And part of getting to the finish line is trying to make everyone whole, and I'm trying to make those subcontractors whole. If anyone is offended by that, then we'll just pay them what we owe them, and we'll rebid the thing, and if they don't get the job, I, I think they'd be upset by that. Or at least have an opportunity, a real opportunity to get a real last look at it. I think they'd be offended by that proposition. And I'm not trying to create a problem, once again. I'm just trying to solve it. So this is a new project with a new developer, without Rick Siciliano or any of his entities, but we're trying to do what's right. And part of doing what's right is trying to keep the people that were hurt in this job as part of the job. And if that somehow violates anyone's sensibilities of fairness, then we don't have to do it that way.
Excuse me, I was not, I ask, I ask a simple question. Is this a continuation project or is it a new project? That, that's all I'm asking.
It's a new project.
Well, no, I don't think you can answer that. Abby, is this a continuation project or is it a new project?
I would treat this as a new project. I defer to Corporation Counsel to help me with the specifics of all those requirements, but I would treat this as a new project with a new developer, following the rules that are typically in our, our redevelopment agreement.
So does that, so if it's a new project, does that mean that everything has to be rebid or do we just pick up with the, whatever bid numbers were already there? I'm hearing all these different things.
So I don't, I don't really know. I would assume the bids would be different because the initial bids were in 2014, but I would defer to Corporation Counsel on what the requirements would be going forward.
Well, there, there will definitely have to be new costing because the scope of work has changed. The original, just very briefly, the original project from more than five years ago had the two buildings. Then Mr. Lawrence modified the scope without getting clearance to add another building in the middle. Then he got in trouble when both bank and the city said, stop, because you did this and didn't get approval. He kept working. That's where all the unpaid thing, he just kept working. Knowing there was no money or knowing, or he, he, I think stood in front of the council and said, well, he hoped he would be able to get financing. So they have changed the scope of work, so it is a, for want of a better word, I would stylize it as a new, new project, but it is truly kind of hyphenated in the sense that they're fixing what he didn't do. He did part of the work, they've changed the scope, they got rid of the middle building, but they're going to finish the entire corner building, which was not in Rick Lawrence's original scope of work. So they're certainly going to have to get new costing, whether or not they do negotiated deals with subs or, I don't, we're not party to how they're paying them. We only want them all to be made, you know, be made whole. So-
I may, plus they're building it out with 45 units of apartments. And here's the question, Tom Lee, I think I can get to what the heart of Alderman Turner's talking about. Is any additional work to be done outside the contractors currently that are involved that would adhere to the new language that she's referencing?
I, I think I disagree. I don't, I think the new language would apply to any of the work that is to be done because it's a new project. So it, it wouldn't apply to any additional work to be done, it would apply to any work that is being done.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Proctor?
That's why I'm proposing we amend it and add that. And then if you can't do it, you can't do it. It doesn't get the money.
Alderman Henner?
Yes, Mayor. So, right now, I, I know you guys went out for RFP for, for, to get a loan for the TIF. Is that correct? That's, that's my understanding.
Correct.
So we don't have the money right now in the TIF by the time they will be done with this project. So we're going to have to borrow the money, right?
There's options where we could do an inter-fund transfer or borrow the funds or there will be an ordinance possibly coming back, transferring the roof funds that were used for the roof, transferring those back to the TIF, because those were TIF funds used. So those are our options on the table.
Is that legal? I mean, I don't know that, can we do that?
Yeah, that's legal. Corporation Counsel?
No, what I was going to say is, Alderman, to answer your question, I think, and I don't have it right in front of me, but my, because it's paid out over a period of years that the cash flow on the TIF allowed it to proceed without borrowing.
Right.
And now, for other projects, which was one of the questions I think Alderman Donilon asked, or various Aldermen have asked different times, is looking at if there are other projects, then there may have to be TIF borrowing or in relation, for example, to the Y and so on. But for this project alone, in isolation, what's looked at now, the, there is no required borrowing now for this project because it's multi-years out. It's two or three years out.
And on, I've got, I've got a part of it here, and it, a question was asked, is a city willing to add a secondary security such as general obligation? So, so we're, if by chance we don't have the money in the TIF, where's that, where's that security coming from? Is it going to have to come from, from corporate? Because we don't have that kind of, you know, where, to me, it's commingling funds and I've got a real problem with that.
Well, there's-
And I, I'm, I'm just, so I'm, I've got, I'm, I'm very concerned about what we're doing here. And I know this is a separate amendment, but it's, or it's a separate deal, but it all has to do with, with, with future TIF money, how much money we have. I understand that part of the, the, what is it, the EV, AV?
EAV, equalized success value?
We're currently, the, what, what we were told that's going to be in the TIF, it was based on that, on a rise. But my understanding is, is it has not risen in years. It's kind of gone flat and down. So let's just say it stays flat. We're not going to have near the, the money that we think we're going to have in it. My question is, are we going to have the money in the TIF to do this?
Alderman Henner? Oh, I'm sorry. So based on the completion schedule the developer's provided and the projections of the TIF increment, assuming a steady increment generation, we will have the funds available because he's not going to be complete until 18 months after he gets his financing secured. I believe he has 90 days from signing this agreement to have the financing all committed to the project. So that's going to give us some time to generate that additional increment. And because the increment is paid out, or the refund of the increment is paid out to the developer, $350,000 a year for the next 10 years until the end, that gives us time to, to build it up and still consider other projects.
Yeah, Director McCarty did a scenario projected for the duration of the TIF, so he could speak to that as well.
Yeah, the mayor's request, I ran some scenarios, different scenarios, based on the expected increment. And the floor, based on the increment decline that we've seen over the last decade, which is around 2%, the floor would be about $7.5 million in available TIF funds. So more than enough to be able to fund this project and others as well. The expectation is that with this project and then other projects that will actually produce increment, that will turn around and we'll either see it at the very least plateau, but the expectation is actually seeing increase in that increment. So there, to answer your question, there, there's plenty of money from the expected cash flows to be able to cover this project and others.
Thank you.
Alderman Donilon?
Director, just, that's, that's $7 million of unobligated?
7.5, yes. And I, I believe I sent the cash flows to all of you. If you want to look at those, if you have any questions, give me a call. But, and I can't remember, I ran a couple of different versions, but, yeah, 7.5, I think was the floor, was-
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah. If it were, let me, I'm sorry. So if it were to just plateau where it is right now, I believe the number was closer to $10 million in available funds. And then, of course, if the increment goes up due to projects, we'll see even more than that.
Alderman Connolly, do you have a question or a comment?
Well, I, I guess, no, I, I guess I maybe need a little bit of clarification. So what we're saying, and I'm just kind of following up on Alderman Henner, there will be no borrowing from corporate fund to make these payments. Is that correct?
No, we wouldn't borrow from corporate funds anyway. I think, as I understand it, this will be paid off over time or at least, what, 18 months from now? By then, the increment should be there. But even if it's paid off over time, no. The normal cash flows coming in, the ebb and flow will certainly produce the dollars that are necessary in order to pay this off over time without any loan whatsoever.
So no loans? Because that has been mentioned, that we could borrow against expected revenues in our TIF funds. So we're, you're saying that's off the table for this?
Not, not for this project, as I understand it, that won't be necessary. Now, if the mayor or the city council, if there are, Alderman Proctor, if there are other projects that come forward that would require more of an upfront payment, something that's structured that way, rather than over time or later on, you know, if the developers understand that the increment won't be back until later and you can work that out. But if that can be worked out and there's a worthwhile project, we might be in a position where we have to go out and loan against the future cash coming in, the future increment. We can certainly do that, but there's really a couple of different ways we can do that. What Alderman Henner was talking about is a loan, either traditional or through, say, a private placement of debt, which we've looked into both of those, both are possible, relatively inexpensive, at least with current interest rates. But there is, there was a question that would we back it up with a general obligation? That wouldn't be, we could do it for all intents and purposes. It's just to guarantee a, a security blanket on that loan so that generally, you would guarantee that with property tax. We do that all the time. And then we just debate the, the property tax requirement because we have the cash and the increment. So we wouldn't go out and get a loan for anything that we don't think the increment's going to be there for. The other option is, we don't have any costs whatsoever associated with borrowing. We could just borrow, get, borrow from the infrastructure fund if we wanted to, just pay that back over time with the increment. We've already run the cash flow scenarios for that and it works just fine. So there are options. But we're not even talking about doing any of that for this particular project. Funds will be there without a loan.
But if, if another project comes along, that even if it has a smaller ask, we may have our hands a little more tied for those other projects.
Right. If it can't be worked out with the developer, ideally, you would work it out and say, okay, here's when the funds are going to be available in 2025 or 2026, whatever. Can you wait that long to get paid? And if they say, no, we can't possibly wait that long, then it's up to the mayor and the council, say, okay, well, we might have to go out and borrow a little bit of money from infrastructure or a bank or whatever in order to make this project, but we believe it's worthwhile and we'll get the return there to make it worth the, the effort of doing that.
Okay, thank you.
But that'll be a policy decision from you all.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other discussion? I know Michael Higgins signed up to speak.
Mayor, we need to vote on the, on the amendment first, I think, don't we, sir?
Yes, sir. And that would be the amendment number two. Yes.
That's with regards to pay the contractors within the 90 days of the ordinance passing and the mayor signing the ordinance, I believe.
Right.
All in favor of the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Amendment two passes. Amendment two passes.
Michael Higgins, Maulner's Restaurant Downtown. Speaking to this project, this building is set empty for a long time, longer than 10 years, four years, a long time. When we had the pigeon guy that was gonna come and get rid of all the, Pigeon Whisperer, this building was the main house for pigeons in our downtown. How long ago was that? 25 years ago? At least?
Wow.
When the Pigeon Whisperer was here?
I'm still hearing Whisperer.
What? So, I'm listening to, and then I listened to Alderwoman Conley say that other developers might wanna come along, and we should wait for them to come along. Well, you have a developer that wants to take care of all the debt required, incurred by Rick Lawrence to the unions and the workers. You think another developer would do that? Or they would just be out in the cold? You can take your chance on that, but I don't know too many developers that would say what this gentleman has said. So, you have someone that wants to make this project good on something that someone else did. We talked about ethnic, what would this do for the ethnic community? Well, as your downtown grows, maybe jobs grow. Maybe jobs grow within walking distance of people who don't have cars. Maybe jobs grow with, with new people growing, coming into the community. And now, we look at our downtown, Augie's gone, Vele gone, Robbie's gone, Feed Store gone, Talkology going, the Hilton up for-
Auction.
Auction. That's your downtown. That's your future. You look, you wanna see a real good future of your downtown? Go to the top of, we do 186 School Foundation Dinner, go to the top of Horace Mann, where the employees dine and have their meeting rooms. Look down on the window facing east, along 9th Street, 10th Street, and 11th Street. And look at the development along there. There's your future for your downtown, because there is none. You want, you, you want, you want developers to come downtown, but the major projects that we've asked for developers to come downtown have not happened. A lot of communities look at these projects, they say, oh, this project right here costs too much TIF money. This costs the city too much. Some cities look at that and say, we can't do it because of that. Some cities say, developer, we'll give you more. Because they're not looking at this development. They're looking at what this development does for this whole community here, and this neighborhood, whether it's gentrification, and I know that's sometimes not a nice word, but how it affects the whole neighborhood, not just the money spent on this development. Because as this development goes forward, spurs maybe new development, creates a, a, more people living in your downtown, which goes back to what she was saying about a 24-hour community instead of a 9:00 to 5:00 community. Going back to what Mr. Redpath was saying. Look at your downtown. Where's the future? Major hotel going away, maybe? More restaurants going away? Obviously, more office spaces going away? That's your future? Fight over how much money this guy's gonna get. Fight over Rick Lawrence and what he did to us. Fight over all that, and give this guy, not give this guy a chance, who is willing to take all that stuff that Rick Lawrence caused, and help get it out of our mouths, the bad taste out of our mouths. He's willing to give us chiclets, so our breath smells better. But, go ahead, fight with him. And in the meantime, look at your downtown. You know, the mayor was saying Fertillo's wanted to go out west. You know why they wanted to go out west? They did the demographics. Maybe if they could do the demographics downtown, they would've been able to come downtown if we had the demographics for it. But we don't. We made this community spread out. People ask me where my competition is. My competition is Veterans Parkway. Because people don't need to cross Veterans Parkway. They can stay out there. I need a vibrant downtown for my business to go. All the shops and stuff need a vibrant downtown for their businesses to grow. Springfield wants to give up its history? What is Springfield's history? Springfield history is your downtown. Lincoln, the race riots, NAACP, all happened downtown, not west of Veterans Parkway. All downtown. This is your heart, but let it go, because you got bad taste for Rick Lawrence in your mouth. And you can't see that a project has a bigger effect on its community than just the project.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions? Alderwoman Turner?
I still want, I guess, I don't think my, my question was ever really answered about the continuation project versus a new project. And if it is a continuation project, then the same contracts stay in place, the same cons, subs stay in place, all of that stays in place. And I understand that there would be a new scope of work, and I understand that there would be new pricing, because pricing has changed. I understand that. But if it's a new project, then we're talking about new bids, new contracts, new everything. So, I, I think I just need some, a concrete answer on how that moves forward.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, and I agree, Alderwoman Turner, that this is a new project, because Sicilano's not gonna be a part of it. Sicilano was a general on this, I believe. And they've said that they're, they're not gonna be a part of it. So, if they're not gonna be a part of it, it's gotta be a new project, gotta have a new general, gotta have new, and all that needs to be bid out. I agree with you 100%. And it's, it's not a continuation. It, it, you know, you could probably get a lot of the subs back in, in there that are doing it, but it's not, it, to me, this is, it's, it's a whole new project. It's a whole new developer, to hold everything. So, it can't be a continuation. Because if it's a continuation, Sicilano's the general, everything else. And we've talked about that, for a long time. But if it is a continuation, we better, we better take a step back here.
What this project is, is a workout project. I mean, that's what this is. I mean, it'd been foreclosed on, you know, we have a new buyer that bought it.
So, it's a new project?
Okay, if it's a new project, then you don't pay the 1.2 million. That's the big issue, the 1.2 million, that the developer doesn't have to pay. So, that, you can't say, oh, it's a, you can't phrase it how you want it phrased with regards to that project. It's a combination of the two. I mean, that's a challenge for all of us. Go ahead, Tom.
Perhaps a compromise suggestion, to the extent we don't use prior contractors, because I wanna be fair to them, and give them a shot, because they all got hurt, then any, any contractor that decides not, any scope of work that a con-contractor doesn't wanna be part of, will rebid to the community and follow every single requirement that, that's required. But to the extent we keep, let's say, the HVAC and electrician on the job, because we wanna be fair to them, because they got hurt, they weren't paid in full, and part of the way making them whole is to get them, you know, make some profit on the future part of the work, even if it's additional scope, those people have the first opportunity, and to the extent we can't come to terms on the new scope, that anything we have to rebid, we follow the, the new guidelines. And this way, everyone's happy. It, it's a compromise that I think satisfies everyone's concerns.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you. And Mr. Lee, this is a question for you, because I, I think we're kind of mixing terms here. You're talking about making our contract, the, the employees, the people who worked on this project whole, which, to my understanding, would be everyone has paid the money that was owed to them already. Moving forward, people having an opportunity to bid on this project is not part of making them whole, unless we're somehow muddying the water here. So, can you clarify that? I, I would like, I would like to know. So, making people whole applies to the existing situation, which is where the people who worked on this project did not have their benefits paid, had, had their monies, their money disappeared. That is making them whole. Is that, is that your understanding?
And the subcontractors being paid.
Yeah, and the subcontractors.
There are, there are two classes of aggrieved parties. You have the, the workers for the union that weren't paid their benefits, they were paid their wages, but not their benefits.
Benefits is part of wages, so I, I don't wanna, let's not split hairs.
Understood. And so, our proposal is to get those folks whole, but then there's also the subcontractors that weren't paid certain funds for work they performed, and we plan on making them whole.
Right. Before we go forward on this project. Because it, to me, I mean, I, I think it's admirable that you would want to give people who had been, you know, gotten a short stick before, a chance to make a profit on this. But that needs to be two separate things. Everyone needs to have, everyone needs to have the money that was already owed to them. They, they need to be paid what they're owed, and that's a separate situation from moving forward and bidding on the next project. Is that-
But the problem, the problem is, Alderwoman Conley, is that if I were to get a new, let's say, electrical contractor, he's not gonna warranty the work that was done by a prior subcontractor, and it puts us in a, in a very difficult position then, to get proper warranties and the like. So, when you have a project like this, particularly on the first building that was started, to start with all new subcontractors, I don't know how to get warranties. I, I don't know how to do that without creating a real mess. Now, perhaps another compromise is, on the first building that's, free quote, is finished, that on that particular building, you know, to the, I use the same contractors, and to the extent those contractors don't wanna do business, or their number is no good, then we'll bid that work out. And then on the next two buildings, which we're gonna do, you know, directly after, then I have no problem bidding it out to the general, you know, to whoever. You guys tell me, give me all the names you want, I'll, I'll bid it to anybody you want, because all they're looking for is an honest day's work for an honest day's pay. So, perhaps on the first building, we, we make the amendment to say, on the first building, that the, the developer has the right to use the subs that were originally on the project, and to the extent he doesn't, then he must put it out to the bid, following all the rules and requirements. And then on the next two buildings, the Bateman Kennedy Building and the Ferguson Building, we go back to the original, we go back to the, the rules as they're, they're stated. I'll bid it any way you, any way I'm required to.
I, and I, let me be real clear here. I'm not making any recommendations or references on any contractors. That's, that's not my job. I'm trying to follow up with Alderwoman Turner's point, which is that the rules have changed for the city of Springfield, and we have enhanced requirements for new bidding, so, and again, I, I still haven't gotten an answer, and I don't, I don't know, Alderwoman Turner, if you have, will those new requirements be applied to this project? As they should be, because they were adopted by this council?
Corporation Council couldn't answer it, but my understanding is that what Tom Lee is stating, the developer is stating, he planned to move forward with the current developers that were involved with the project. So, that's E.L. Pruitt's, and he can list them out, individuals that were involved, union contractors. So, if you wanna cut them out of the project and start fresh-
No, this isn't about cutting anyone out of a project, Mayor.
No, that's what it is. That's exactly what it is.
The rules have changed. No, it's not. The rules have changed.
Because what we're talking about, he just say, stated, the path forward for the developer, he's the expert, he cannot warranty the work with changing contractors. So, what he's offering is, he would continue with the same contractor that started the work, finished the work. Anything outside of that would be bid out. Corporation Council, is that correct?
Well, yeah, the, the general development agreement, it requires him to meet all of our ordinances and requirements.
That was my question.
And that's not a question. What we're, the, the difficulty that I'm seeing is, we really can't interfere with his contractual relationships with his, you know, with his subs. We require, in certain circumstances, bidding, and certain other general types of things, but we don't decide what bid he accepts.
But if this is a new contract, he doesn't have any contractual arrangement with anyone. If this is a new project.
No, I'm, I'm talking, I'm sorry. I'm talking about, I don't know what discussions he's had with a, he gave an example, I don't know what discussion he's had with a vendor who's, that first building is partially done. So, I don't know what discussion has taken place to finish the work in that building, which is what he was referencing, so that they can, he gave a business example of trying to make sure he had warranties. So, I don't know what discussion, or negotiation, or something has taken place between him and the sub. But even in our bidding stuff, we don't dictate who he, who, who any developer takes. We may require public, there has to be public solicitation. We don't dictate, ever, what sub the, the developer would have to hire.
I don't think anyone was suggesting that.
But I'm just saying that, that I'm trying to get back to, he's gonna have to follow all of the rules. Our, our standard agreement requires him to file, if the question is, does he have to file or follow our rules? The answer is yes, because our agreement requires him to comply with all laws, ordinances, et cetera, of the city.
Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor of the, any final comments, Mr. Lee?
Well, I'd like to say, regardless of what the outcome is, I'd like to thank Alderman Proctor for his constant communication and assistance. I'd also like to thank Mayor Langenfelder, or Mayor Langfelder, for his support and guidance, and also Mr. Zirkel, who's been very helpful in trying to work through the, the logistics of Springfield politics. And so, I, I wanna thank everybody, regardless of what happened, regardless of what happens, I wanna thank you all for the time, and hopefully, we can all work together and, and celebrate a ribbon-cutting. Thank you all very much for your time.
All those in favor of the, oh, Alderman Redpath?
Mr. Lee, do you, do you plan on doing the project with or without the TIF money, but go with the other option?
You know, sir, if we don't get the TIF money, I'm, I'm not certain how it goes. I can tell you that I'm certain if we don't get the TIF money, the union's not getting paid, and the contractors aren't getting paid, because we have no legal obligation. It'd be foolish to pay money we don't owe in a project that's already a very difficult project to construct. And I don't say that to rattle a saber. I say that because it's the reality and situation.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance as amended twice, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll. Or someone will. Darlene?
You there, Frank?
Right.
We can break up. Darlene, here's Darlene.
I, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
No.
Alderman Fulgenczi?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman D'Scenzo?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
No.
Alderman Donlin?
No.
Donlin?
No.
No? Alderman Hanauer?
No.
Okay, we have three no's and seven yes.
No, you got the, you got the vote wrong. It's five to five.
Six to four.
Six to four.
Six to four.
Good try, Charlie.
Sorry, Landford, man.
Alderwoman Turner, did you vote yes or no?
Alderman Redpath, Alderman Gregory, Alderman Fulgenczi, Alderman Proctor, Alderwoman D'Scenzo, and Alderman McMenamin voted yes.
Okay. Got it. It is so noted.
So, it passes six-four. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is 2020-345, an ordinance approving the appointment of Charlotte Johnson to the City of Springfield Retired Employees Advisory Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020-345 on final passage. It moved.
Second.
It moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll. So it passes six, four. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sorry.
Next item on the agenda is 2020-345, an ordinance approving the appointment of Charlotte Johnson to the City of Springfield Retired Employees Advisory Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-345 on final passage.
Come on.
Second.
Good move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenty?
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman D'Scenzo?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
I believe that was ten yeses.
You're correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 2020-347, an ordinance authorizing a lease extension agreement with VB-S1 Assets LLC. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-347 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Good move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenty?
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman D'Scenzo?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
We have ten yeses and zero no's.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda. Is there any unfinished business coming forward to City Council?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderwoman Conley, then Alderman Redpath.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to, with the concurrence of Alderman Proctor, be included on, we have four ordinances on first reading, and I, I apologize. I meant to reach out to Corporation Council to be added as a co-sponsor. Their ordinance is 2020-363, uh, 378, 379, and 380. Alderman Proctor, if you don't mind, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
All co-sponsors are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Me too.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley and Alderwoman D'Scenzo, any others? Alderman Redpath?
Mayor, I'd like to clear something up. Last night, there was a TV report about the communication with, between the City Council and, and you and your administration. I was quoted about saying how that, that you and your administration do not communicate with us and don't tell us things until things were, until a very last minute. My quotes for that, for that interview were based on situations that happened with some of the downtown TIF projects, frankly, the Ferguson Building, the YMCA property, the Y, the Y, the new YMCA, and, and homeless shelter. It's your prerogative, Mayor, to not talk to us about certain things, because if you're doing negotiations, it, that kind of thing, Mayor, kind of irritates us, and I'm not, I don't want to speak for the City Council. I'm speaking for myself, because sometimes we think that we have a right to be involved in that only because we, we want to be part of, of the solution, not of the problem. I want you to know that during that interview, that the reporter asked me about my confidence in you and if you were telling us the truth. I told him throughout that interview that I thought you were an honorable man, and you do, that I don't think you lie to us. I did, I did tell him that we don't always agree on policy, but it was, but, but, you know, sometimes that's part of democracy. For the way that interview came out, I want to apologize to you. And I'm sorry about that.
I stand by my statements from that interview.
I stand by mine, too. And actually, just real quick, is, and Corporation Council can weigh in, because there is a clear, distinct, there's legislative body and the administrative body, and that's, you hit the nail on the head with regards to negotiations, you know, you, that's, it can be very delicate, and you try to put, I think this is case in point, you try to line everything up, you help it, you hope it's successful, because once you introduce something, that's when it is under scrutiny. So everybody asks, what about this? What about that? So you try to answer all that as much as possible, because with the YMCA project in particular, we had a closed-door discussion, and it's supposed to be confidential, and then next thing we know, that day, that very next day, or that, that day before the Y Board even knew, we're getting calls from the media. So that's the, you know, that's the delicate balance with regards to that. So, you know, we all have room for improvement, and that's what we always, or I always tried to do, is do self-critique. How can we make today better than yesterday, and tomorrow better than today? And that's what I'll continue to do through the rest of my terms in office. Alderwoman Turner?
I don't have an apology, because I didn't, I wasn't in the queue.
Sometimes that's safer.
However, since we're, I have two things. The first thing is, since we're talking about honesty and transparency, I think that, I think that Alderwoman D'Scenzo has owed an apology. She, she asked a simple question about, about safety on the water, and if there needed to be a permit for any type of parade or anything at the lake, which I thought was a very valid question. I thought that it spoke to the times in which we are living, where things are, are, can quickly get out of control, and so I thought it was a very valid question. I thought she deserved an answer to that question. And for the hype to get over, just totally out of control about it, and she was subject to a lot of very nasty social media, and, and some nasty comments regarding a State Journal Register article, some nasty social media comments about a, in regard to a radio report, I thought was a bit over the top, and I, I especially felt for her, because as you all know, I am often the subject of, of those types of, of social media discussions. I'll, I'll, I'll just say discussions for, for
You can say attacks, if that's okay.
Lack of a better word. However, I think where it really went over the top was, there was a, and, okay, I'm going to say right now, I'm not discussing politics, so nobody called the Inspector General, but there was a meeting of the Republican Central Committee, where a member of that Central Committee said some things that were very untrue, that ginned up that attack, talked about that she was preparing to, in her inordinate banning flags from the lake, ban, you know, banning all kinds of things from the lake, and that, nothing in that, with that regard was ever said, was ever thought, was ever mentioned. So I think for, for someone to make those statements in an open forum like that, so that it could then be carried out into the community, was, was very hurtful. It was wrong. It was very dishonest, and I think that she has owed an apology. That's that. The second thing is
Thank you.
The second thing is, there was a, there was a, a very bad incident at Tent City over the last couple of days. There was, and I know that, I got a lot of pushback, because I, I said that I didn't think that Tent City was an appropriate, was an appropriate response to the homeless, homelessness in the city of Springfield, but there was an, an attack there. Two people ended, or ended up in ICU. I think they're, they may, they may still be there. So I guess my question is, do we have a, a report from John Fallon, our contractual, contractual, that's contractor that's looking at this issue? And if not, when are we going to have that report? And the second thing is, when are we going to move forward with some, some type of permanency for the homeless population as we move into the winter months?
Yeah, he can speak to the discussions that he's progressed towards. With regards to the individuals injured, I know one is placing housing, I believe, by helping hands out of the hospital, and then the other one, I'm not sure if she's out or not, but maybe he, he knows the recent update, or maybe the chief can update us with regards to that.
You know, with regard to the report, I think that, so I don't have anything I know about one of the individuals, and I know that they're not in ICU, they're in rehab, and it's an unfortunate thing. It's very dangerous for people to live outside. I'm not, so, I will answer the first part and then talk about later. My hope is that the city of Springfield does not have to use funds for anything permanent for people who are homeless. My hope is that there's better evaluation of people and ongoing and immediate moves to housing in the way that other cities do. That's my hope. And I think I've been in conversations with the mayor. There are potential ways to invest differently and to be able to, to move towards longer-term housing. And I'd be, I, I, this is always a hard place to be able to talk to 10 people all at once with different issues, and I'd be happy to talk with you individually.
No, I, I understand that, and I'm, I guess I'm not asking for a conversation. I'm asking for a, some type of written report or some type of outcome.
Okay. So I met with the Continuum today and, and the mayor, and we're working on coming, bringing something forward either this week or next. We're doing our best in negotiating, and again, I'm happy to talk individually with any Alderman as, as we do that, and try to recognize everything that the mayor just said in terms of the difference between the administration and the legislative body, and I understand that people are eager to have that. It's very dangerous to have people out on the street, which is why the mayor's been really focused on getting people off of the physical street and into housing. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure. Could you state your name for the council?
Good evening, our mayor, Alderman. I did see that incident that took place in Tent City, but before I go on to that, I'm going to let you know, I'll tell you everything about it, because there's a few things on my mind. First of all, I'm on federal probation. I went to prison for drawing disability, because I got overexposed to radiation. I went back to work, I didn't afford it. So the 18 months, they sent me here. So this is my city now. I clean the four places. There's a Cuban church, assistant carpenter, Tent City, the food, the bread line, whatever you call it. I have no problem picking it up. I call 911 all the time. Nobody likes it, because I'm a fat nurse. That's why I'm special, trauma, and I made sure these people are okay. And my rec, my suggestion is, to this city, what they need to do is, get social workers out there. These people got mental problems, a lot of mental conditions. And in Seattle, what we did, we implemented a 911 program, that you cannot resist to go to, 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 to the hospital. You cannot, see, they resist, and then eight hours later, they're sick again. You need a detox center here, where they can have help, take them to get detoxed, whatever have you. But most of the homeless, I said, I was in Tent City. I got to sit there now. I can't stay there. I'm not comfortable. I'm not. And the man that beat him, beat him, him and I went to his store that day. And I, I'll be honest with you. I bought him a beater. And then he started, he tried to rob the store, and so I didn't go ahead of me. And then I get back to the Tent City, he had beat up this man or woman, and it didn't make any sense. And then today, he's at the bread line, laughing. I went to call 911 again. I should have turned him in. I, 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 I was wrong. I should have called and turned him in. They won him. He was wrong. He beat that poor woman almost to death. She's in ICU, and she might not make it. But I'm serious. This city needs a detox wagon, they need a detox program, and these are mental circle workers out there, and, 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 and medical staff. I called today, and had a guy, he, he had a seizure, fell right in the street. He denied to go to, go to the hospital. An hour later, he fell again. It's costing money. It's wasting the state's money. And I can't understand why this, this is, this is, this is the capital. Why can't we get any money from the federal government? It doesn't make any sense. Call FEMA, whatever, get it done. We've got a pandemic going on worldwide. Why can't we not all get along? I am no better than you. You're no better than me. When I say, when you fall down, and you, you have a heart attack, I don't care what color you are. I don't care what you do. I'm a thief. I told a police officer, if you arrest me today, and something happen to you, I'm, I'm taking care of you. I, I just, that's just how I was raised. And it's just, it's just, the people are starting to come to the streets. I don't know what we're going to do about it. And, you know, it's a worldwide problem. But see, we're in the United States of America, and I served in the military. I did the Navy, so, and I love my country. I love my people here. I don't care what color you are, who you are. I just, I just, there's so much I want to say. I'm just so stressed out. But we need some social workers out there to see the people, need some medics. In Seattle, what we did, we implemented a 911 program, Dr. Cole, you cannot resist to go to hospital. We call the fire department, you're going. These guys resist, and then four hours later, they have the same problem, and you got a medical resource. And then I heard earlier about the fire department guy, about the overtime. They first responders. They need to be funded. I understand you might not need to cut down the overtime, but right now, what's going on, they need their money. We got to find the money, some kind of way. Somebody can donate. We got people with millions of dollars in this country. Okay? Help us out. And I don't know what else to say. I just, I just, I'm stressed. I just, I'm, I'm just, I'm here, keep rolling. When I get out of here, I'm, I'm going home, and back to my home, ain't got to worry about nothing. But I, I care about my country. I care about my fellow Americans. I care about my citizens. I really do.
Thank you.
Now, thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to say, I do want to say one real quick thing to the council about this particular issue. As someone who's out there talking with people in Tent City, the folks in Tent City are pretty afraid of what happened, and I think it's important that we recognize that the individual that was involved was a dangerous person to have. And it's difficult with COVID, and the jails have been, they're doing their best to keep people safe in the jails by turning just a minute. By releasing people, but the state's attorney is, makes decisions, and they have to make decisions, and this is a person whose people are very concerned about. And so I would say that no matter where that person is, it was a problem. It was particularly a risky thing to happen at Tent City this weekend, and I hope that that person doesn't return back to the community for a while and gets the help that they need.
Just, just, just to make it
And that there's a large number of people that are in the homeless shelters, in those tents, who were not causing any trouble and who were doing their best and were afraid, so.
I don't know if, Chief Winslow, do you have anything to add?
Can I interject? Because I just talked to the state's attorney a little while ago about this, and there has been a warrant issued for that individual. Am I correct on that, chief? And so he's not going to be on the street. If they haven't caught him already, the state's attorney is well, just so you know, it's just happened recently, and the chief's probably going to explain that to you, but the state's attorney has filed different charges on this individual, and there's a warrant for his arrest, and I know that the police are looking for him if they haven't found him already. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Linda Justice. I'm 66 years old. I have a bachelor's degree in social work or social services, but that's not important. I've been doing work with the homeless people for 20 years in this town, at least 20 years. It's a very dangerous situation in this town right now, and it has been for a number of years. There's very complex issues at hand, and some of them are active addiction and active mental illness out on the streets. I've tried to talk with people in the police department and other sources that are, are involved officially with the homeless public, excuse me, with the homeless situation here in Springfield. It doesn't seem like it's to any avail. Tent City's a very dangerous place. I talked with the police about it and how dangerous it was. I tried to get, I'm, I've been trying to get an active police presence there. People can't self-monitor when there's active mental illness. It's untreated, and active addictions. addictions, open alcohol. I was over there a couple of weeks ago, or more recently, but a couple of weeks ago, I was over there, there was active alcohol going on. There was a fellow from my building, which is Park Towers, where a lot of homeless people are being sent. He's probably a dealer. I've seen him deal drugs across from the mission when the mission was open. He was over there in Tent City, he shouldn't have been over there. If Tent City's allowed to remain in place, and Tent Cities have been successful in various parts of the nation, it needs to be monitored. And yes, you do need social workers such as myself being there. I'm not getting responded to by people because I don't have a card, I don't work for an agency anymore. And it's not so much about me, it's about the people that's out there, and actually getting people that know the people on the streets. Some of the newer people, I don't know very well. We need to do something for our fellow citizens. I don't really care about the money. I know it sounds crazy, but God sent me here to speak. We have no right to let our brothers and sisters die on the street for whatever reason. The past couple of weeks, I've been on the street, and some of the people that are actively picked up by fire and the police to be sent to ERs are to be taken to jail. They shouldn't be out there for whatever reason. Some have addictions, some don't. But they end up, some of them are gonna end up getting run over by cars. There was a lady that had to stop and position her car so somebody's head wouldn't get run over in the street. And he's actively out there, kinda falling in the streets all the time. He's been hit by a car once. I don't have the solutions, but we as human beings need to try to figure something out. And we can't keep delaying any kind of place for people to be. The ideal situation is to have people in their own places, but until that's possible, we can't house everybody by the time winter comes. And I'm tired of seeing people die bit by bit, and some of them pretty quickly. It's, there's too many, and it's unacceptable in any land, but especially the United States of America. That being said, I need to make a real quick comment about the place that I live, where they do send a lot of homeless people. I'm being evicted from that place because I've stood up for lots of deficiencies in that building. The people from Public Works, they're kick, excuse me, kick-ass group of people, they get their jobs done. And some of the stuff that's wrong with that building that was neglected by the management on purpose has been attended to. There's still a lot of stuff that needs to be attended to. One of them is a faulty elevator system. I'm unfamiliar with rules and regulations, but the elevators could possibly be shut down because they're dangerous, possibly because of their antiquated age. And I don't know how people get by with getting up and down steps, you know, if it's a five-story building, and some people are on wheelchairs. I came here hoping that Channel 20 would be here so I could propose that the city of Springfield people donate money and get her done and get us some elevators to get in there. Please do something about that building and about the homeless situation. We can't just talk about it. These are my friends on the street, and they're my family. I love them, and I'm tired of seeing them die for whatever reason. It's not ours to judge, it's his. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, ma'am, what street, what building are you speaking of, ma'am? What building are you speaking of?
Park Tower. It's on 405 Williams, it's on the corner of Skerritt and Passville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, one more time, a few things I didn't address. One of them is like with Tent City, the major problem that's going on is that we have people coming in preying on the homeless. I sit there on the first, when people, 30% get social security, third, on the first, third, fifth, whatever. And they came down there trying to sell them drugs, whatever have you. And then when people come in and donate food, they come in and take it. It's causing conflict. Okay, I can't control it because it's not my home. I'm not the head of a household. I try to do what I can. I, I don't, if people bring food, share it. My mom sends me $50 every day because I'm not working. I send $40 on food for their camp, and I just, I can't even sleep there no more. I've got a tent. I'm just not moving to an apartment. And I'm, I'm living with somebody. I can't sleep comfortably. And there's another thing I need to tell you. It's just, the controversy is people from the outside. And I feel real bad because I should have had that guy apprehended today that hurt that woman and that man. He's sitting there at the bread line bragging about it. And I should have kinda called 911. And I feel like less than a man. And I'm telling you, this is a beautiful city. You know, I came to Springfield like eight, nine years ago, I'm from Seattle. I came to Savannah and had to have eye surgery, had to come to Springfield. Now I'm here, and so, I'll make the best of it. But obviously, I made a few recommendations. Get some mental social workers out there, get a medical crew out there. It will save the state money. It will save it. Okay, and I can't understand why we can't get over the federal government and roll the taxes over. You know, something. It hurt not to.
Mayor, can we hear from the chief, please?
Huh?
Yeah, Chief Winslow's gonna come.
I'm done.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's the chief, oh man, I didn't even wait for him. You better.
I appreciate his passion. Now, as Alderman Redpath stated, that this morning, we had conversations with the state's attorney's office about the severity of the injuries. The charges were upgraded against the suspect, a warrant has been obtained. I'm not sure if we've taken him into custody yet, but obviously, we know who we're looking for, and it should be just a matter of time.
And then the security detail around the premise?
So, basically, what we have tasked our officers within the overnight hours, every hour on the hour, or as close as possible, depending on call service, to go over there and provide extra patrols in that area while trying not to disturb them by shining lights and stuff while I'm in the middle of the night. We are monitoring that. We just don't have the manpower to put somebody there the whole entire time. We just don't have that manpower.
I've talked to the continuum about hiring people to oversee it at night.
No, we'll continue to monitor it in the overnight hours, and in the day, watch guys, and the afternoon, guys do as well, but they're not doing it every hour as we've asked the others on the overnight. We believe that under the cloak of darkness is when people are most at risk, and we'll try to be over there every hour.
Okay. Next sign up to speak is John Keating.
Who?
John Keating.
Thank you guys very much for allowing me to dress you this evening. I actually have two things that I wanna touch on. The first is, I'm sorry, my name's John Keating, I'm a local community activist and organizer. I'm a co-founder of Eat, Education, and Action Together, as well as a candidate for the 96th District, which Tent City sits in. On behalf of a group of concerned citizens, we're asking you, Mayor Langfield, to give continual updates on the housing situation for those in Springfield without homes. In addition, we ask that you rise to the occasion in your leadership to ensure there's a collaborative cohesive plan between social agencies to expedite this process. It's important that long-term and short-term plans don't get in the way of each other, that any plan for the winter is also a sustainable, housing-first-focused plan, and that the work of implementing the longer-term plan not distract from the imperative of low barrier immediate shelter for those who want to come in from outside, especially in the face of the quickly approaching dangerous weather. It's also important to remember that this is not an issue of homeless people, but of houselessness. These are people that are not much unlike you and me, that through a variety of circumstances are without shelter. They're not homeless people, they are people that are currently without homes. And if you do wanna name the temporary housing after, if that's a motion to name it after Alderman Gregory, I'll second that for you, Edgar. And the second thing that I wanna speak on is something that has come up again and again, and it's in the realm of the Police Review Commission, which I know that because it is contractually bargained, it is not something that we can actually discuss. But one of the things that has been brought up is, and that Chief Winslow has mentioned and said that the department has been lauded for, is that, was it last year there were only 14 complaints? 18? I have been in the process of speaking with municipalities similarly sized to Springfield, and that number seems to be, at first take, artificially low. I'm waiting on the FOIA requests to come in to actually get the official numbers from any of these departments, but they look at numbers about 10 times that, 150 to 180 for a city about our size. And we believe that that could be because the process to make a complaint is obscure and difficult for an average citizen to navigate through. I'm actually personally working with a woman who is trying to go through the process, and she called the review commission multiple times, it rang twice and hung up on her. So, do we have 18 complaints because our police force is doing things that well, or do we have 18 complaints because people can't actually make the complaints? Something that has happened in, let me get the names of these cities real quick. Medford, Oregon, Meridian, Idaho, and Winchester, Virginia have implemented police comment cards. Any interaction with the police force, they, be it, they come out and take your cat out of a tree, they pull you over, you get a card. It says things to the effect of excellent, rated excellent to poor for timeliness, friendliness, professionalism, solution-oriented, and an overall rating. It also has a compliment portion, so if the police are acting in their best interest, they're doing things to best for the community, that's something that can also be recorded. I think that something of that nature, with the information on that of how to actually contact the proper channels, would benefit the city in the fact that we're actually getting the real data on what's occurring. Right now, I don't think that that's actually the case. Thank you guys for letting me address you. You guys have a wonderful evening. I've gotta go get kids to bed because it's a little later than I thought it was gonna be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is James Johnson.
Hey, Mayor, before I start, I wanna point out that corner over there, in the words that descend, so what are we doing? Now, last time I checked my measuring stick, social distance is six feet. It's a little, that's a little close, so I just thought I'd point that out. Pull it up? I'm gonna pull it down. Okay. My name's James Johnson, y'all know Word Two, B300, lifelong member, or lifelong residence. Before I get started with this racial injustice, let me say a few things. One, this is not political. I don't care what party you with. Two, I'm not going to downplay what will happen. Three, not all cops are bad. But if the good ones don't stand against the bad ones, then they all are bad. Now, if you think that it is okay for a sworn officer who is to serve and protect to kill a man by knee, choking, or shooting, that you're not gonna hear or understand anything I say from this point on. I'm speaking as a black man only, I'm not wearing no other hats, and I wanna make that clear. For all my life, black men have been targeted. Black men have been targets on. Let me start over. For all my life, black men have had a target on our backs. We are stopped, harassed, arrested, beat, and shot, more than anybody else on this earth. When LeBron, when LeBron James says, "We are scared," he is right about it. Most people are. I'm not. I fear God. I hear you. Why does some fear police? I'm glad you asked. I'll tell you. If we wear hoodies, we get killed. Trayvon Martin. If we stand outside near a store, we get killed. Eric Gardner. If our kids play with toy guns, we get killed. Tremere Rice. If we sleep in our beds, we get killed. Breonna Taylor. And if on a traffic stop, we can say I have a concealed carry and still end up dead. Mr. Still in Minnesota. And there are many more. When they chant, "No justice, no peace," that means what you see now. If you don't arrest the officer who did the shooting, there would, there wouldn't be no peace. Cops need to be held accountable for taking human life unjustified. Enough is enough. Now, I don't condone burning, looting, but I do understand. Now, there's some other people feel different. And I quote, "If you can take a life, they can burn your building down." I don't feel that way. We are not being heard. We want justice. We want ordinance in place to stop the injustice, and we want new laws in place. That man over there with that brown badge called the chief, and his other buddy out there, they've done a real good job. And I stand with them. And we had had many conversations, and they know how I feel. If somebody else is in the wrong, I'm standing with them. They in the wrong, I can't stand with them. The chief has done a great job. And I'm gonna stay on my notes. If you guys change that residency rule for cops that don't have to live in our city, smack in our face. We worked so hard for that. We just went backwards, and that's all I'm gonna say on that. Now, let me be clear on something. I heard on the radio, talk radio, the most asinine statement about SPD. SPD is not a model department for the rest of the world, or this country. I'll remind you of the Renata Fraziers, the police guardians, Ricky Davis, and others. I commend the mayor and the chief on the work that has been done, but there's so much more work to be done. So, the question is, now, how will you rectify the wrong? Any questions? And let's be open. Let's talk about it. I'm willing to talk to anybody about how we feel as a black man in this country. We've been targets. I've been, I've been pulled over, stopped, but I'm one of them that hasn't been beaten. I know a lot of males that have been beat by cops, and that's sad. I like to see ordinances in place. And Hannah left, and he said, "Everything gotta go through here. It starts here. If we want change, this is where it gotta start." You know? Not trying to deform the police department. We just wanna stop being targets and being killed, and nobody is being held accountable for it. I got a lot of cops friends, black and white. But I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of black males that are scared, there's a lot of mamas, there's a lot of grandmamas who worry about their babies every time they leave the house. Put yourself in our shoes. Do you have to have that conversation with your kids so they can come back home safely? Because you don't know what cop might have a bad day? I don't condone what happened in California. That's scary. That's why I decided to come here and speak to you guys tonight, because like someone else said, I love my country, and I live in this city, and I don't wanna see it burn. But everybody don't feel like me. But everybody don't feel like me. Take my word, and I'm not downplaying it. There's a group out there, they're just waiting for an opportunity, sadly to say. But there's some who's just waiting for an opportunity, and it'll go up. I want to make sure you guys understand where the blackmail is coming from today. If they, let's not act like it never happened here in Springfield, and all due respects to the Clemens family. We had had issues and incidents here. We don't want it to happen no more, because this little younger generation that's coming through now, they, they're wilding out, and they're gonna go. And I don't want to see it happen. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions? Alderman Turner?
You know, James, Mr. Johnson came in and spoke last week, and after he spoke, it was dead silence. I'm not sure if the silence was because it was hard to hear what he had to say, or if no one just didn't have anything to say. And then he came in and spoke tonight, and after he spoke, dead silence. Again, I'm not sure if that's because it was hard to hear what he had to say, or if because there was no response to what he had to say. But I will tell you that his comments on both nights were, I, I know Mr. Johnson comes in and speaks often, and sometimes after he, sometimes he, his comments are laced with levity, or attempts at levity. And, and, and he and I have conversations after, afterwards, often. But I will tell you that his comments last week and tonight were very heartfelt, came from his heart, and have a lot of truth to them, a, a, a ring of truth to them. And I know that that's very hard for some people to hear, because we all come from different places, different life experiences. But I will tell you that there is a lot of truth to what he said, and I am, I am hopeful, because I have seen this council work very cooperatively to address a lot of the issues that he talked about. A lot of the issues that he's talked about, we have introduced and passed ordinances to address a lot of those things, so that hopefully we won't have the kinds of situations in our community that we see played out across this country. So, so I appreciate James coming in and, and saying those words, and I also appreciate the cooperation that I have received from everyone around this horseshoe as I work to put ordinances and, and standard operating procedures and standards in place so that our community moves forward together. Because if we don't do that, we can have very good intentions, but everything is fluid. The, the same person will not always be sitting in that chair. All of us will not always be sitting around this horseshoe. I know this is my, my last term because of term limits. So again, I just appreciate the cooperation as we move forward together to make our city the best that it can be.
Yeah, with that, like, James has been coming up for a number of years. I think that's important, because it is insightful to, we have differing opinions on some things, but I think some things we do agree upon. But I really appreciate his willingness to come up and speak, and then share what's on his mind, because it's something we do or don't take lightly, and always look at how we can improve things. So we appreciate you sharing your insights with us. Any other comments? Alderman DeSento?
James, I don't know what it's like to be black. I'm a West Side White girl. I have a little blue-eyed son, but I am your ally, and I do stand with you, and I do stand with people of color. And I've made no bones about that from day one, sitting in this seat. So I will never know what it's like to be a person of color, but just know that I'm on your side.
Alderman Gregory?
James, we appreciate you always coming out. Like I told you last week, man, this is, this is, you know, whether we, we agree or not, you know, we, we want our citizens, from all of our wards, to, to come and address, you know, on what's going on in our communities, near and far. And whether we agree or not, or whether you take 10 minutes instead of five, we, we still want you to come. We enjoy it, and that, that doesn't go for just James, it goes for anybody. But that, that's the one thing I do like about, uh, uh, the good mayor, is that he, he will let you go over your, your time a little bit, and, because he wants you to get it out. And, and, and that's what we have to do. We got to listen, is, is, is sometimes as painful as it is. So I appreciate you, James, and, you know, encourage others to, to come and, you know, voice their opinion. Thank you.
Alderman Colley?
I, I just, I'll be really brief and not go over five minutes. I, I just want to say, I, I get a lot of emails, I get a lot of phone calls, and it generally it's people telling me something that needs to be fixed. And, and I, a lot of people follow that up with an apology, you know, "I'm sorry to always be complaining to you." And, and my, my response always is, you know, I, I can't be everywhere, and, and the reason I think we all ran for this job is to be a part of finding solutions for our city. So I, Alderman Turner, you're right. I, I was quiet last week. I was tired last week. And I'm tired today. I'm tired all the time, I think. But, no, I do appreciate you coming, and, and I appreciate our gentleman who left. But we have to hear different voices. We have to hear different experiences, and I can't be everywhere, I can't be everything. I'm just, I'm just, you know, one person. But it, I think the more people who come and participate and, and care about what happens in here, the more change we can affect. And, and this is a good group. I, I'm proud to serve on this council. I'm proud to serve with people who I think are all pulling, despite, you know, not, we don't always have 10, 10-0 votes, but we pull together, and, and it means a lot to me. And so I appreciate you coming. I, I, ma'am, I thank you for coming and speaking from your heart about, about your situation and what you do, and, you know, it's, it's important for us to hear from people. And so don't, don't apologize, and please keep talking, because I'm, I'm always listening.
Thank you. Alderman McMenma?
James, thank you for taking my phone call last week. That was a good half-hour conversation and exchanging of views, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Next is Jack Freishman. Jack Freishman here. Ted, I don't have a last name. So if you introduce yourself and give us your address, we'd appreciate it.
I'm Ted Kealan. I live at 527 West Kennedy.
Thank you.
In regard to the upcoming proposed reform ordinance, this is a five-minute list of proposed demands for the Springfield Police Department, based on demands made by an alliance of groups, including the Collegiate Freedom and Justice Coalition, Correct Heart, and Whites Against Racism in Oklahoma City on Friday, July 31 of this year. As mentioned in the article entitled, "Two Months Later, Oklahoma City Protesters and Police Take a Very Different Approach: No Rocks and Bottles, No Tear Gas, or Beanbag Rounds," by Brett Dickerson, editor of the Oklahoma City Free Press, August 2, 2020. First, protesters in Oklahoma City wanted independent prosecutors to handle cases of officer-involved shootings. A true independent citizens' review board with subpoena powers, empowered to automatically investigate whether there's a citizen's complaint or not, is what we need in Springfield, instead of the current review board that citizens largely don't know how to contact, and that seems to fall short, according to several alderpeople and Black Lives Matter leaders in Springfield. As you know, Alderman Frank McNeil fought for over a decade to get the current citizens' review board in place in 2003. It's up to the community to see that it is finally effectual, even if that means dissolving the current board to make way for a board that works. Second, Oklahoma City protesters demanded that the city establish residency requirements for Oklahoma City Police Department officers. Springfield's Police Benevolent and Protective Association Unit Number Five, the Springfield Police Department Union, is against residency requirements due to concerns over recruitment and safety. The Springfield Police Department is currently the only Springfield city organization that does not require residency. Third, the Oklahoma City protesters demanded for all authorities, including the police, to end what protesters believe is infringement on First Amendment rights. This has to do with allowing folks to protest. Our right to protest has so far been supported here in Springfield, and we hope it stays that way. Fourth, protesters called for an end to qualified immunity for police officers. Legally, when a police officer violates constitutional rights secured under the federal constitution, the vehicle for suit is the Civil Rights Act, which made federal constitutional claims actionable against state and local actors like police officers. But federal courts and the Supreme Court created qualified immunity. It's possible to remove it as a matter of state law in state courts for claims made under state law, but it won't fix federal claims. Suing local actors and local courts has always been problematic. Hence, actions in federal courts are superior. But once activist lawyers had successes in the '60s, the qualified immunity doctrine was created to stop them, and the U.S. Supreme Court recognized and defined it. Getting rid of it in federal cases will require an act of Congress. Fifth, and last, they also wanted officers to be required to wear body cameras and turn them on during any encounter with residents. The Springfield Police Department already has body cams, and most patrol cars already have dash cams now. And I'm happy to say Springfield was the second city in the state after Chicago to do this. Local judges have been fully willing to say, "No cam footage, then case dismissed" in criminal cases. So they are incentivizing law enforcement to use their cams by essentially saying, "If you want to prosecute, you need the video to back it up." The body and the dash cams protect everyone. That being said, police still have been known to turn them off, and this has got to stop. Since August 5, our project, the Demands Project, has accrued 650 likes on their Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you. Then next is Rosanna. Rosanna? Rosanna.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Rosanna Polito. I'm a Latina and a senior citizen, and a taxpayer in Springfield, Illinois. And I want to say that I had a distinct blessing and privilege to serve as a police dispatcher in Northfield, Illinois. That's where I witnessed and realized the danger that the men and women who are out there every day on the job, the danger that they're in. So, you know, when I read about the reforms, you know, I have a grain of sand of knowledge. Even though I was a dispatcher, I still admit I have a grain of sand of knowledge of what the police actually go through. When I see the onslaught on officers everywhere, it's almost like it's in the news every day. And the disrespect, like when I, I read about the two deputies that were shot in California, and that the protesters were yelling, "We hope they die," and they blocked the entrances to the emergency room at the hospital. I found in a study that they did from the U.S. Department of Justice, it was the Office of Justice program, the National Justice Institute. This is what they said, that when pepper spray was implemented, the North Carolina study found that the number of injuries to police officers and suspects declined after pepper spray was introduced, and the complaints that police using excessive force also declined. So obviously, working, you know, with the police, I know some police officers. So I said to my friend, who's a detective in Chicago, "What ramifications does that have, not allowing our officers to use pepper spray?" And he explained to me, he said, "You know, on my belt, I have all these tools. The last one I want to pick is the lethal one. So pepper spray gives me an option to use, instead of using the lethal weapon." And so when I see police reforms asking to take that away, why would we want to take options away from officers that would increase chances of them having to use a lethal weapon? And so I mentioned the study that I looked up, where it talked about the benefits of pepper spray, that it, it, it brought, de-escalated things. And so what I'd like to ask all the aldermen here is if you would supply myself and, you know, a lot of other citizens, taxpayers of Springfield, the reports and the research you have done that show that doing away with tear gas and doing away with pepper spray and no-knock warrants, how that benefited, you know? And, and because, you know, honestly, I have to say that myself and other people have said this, you know, we're scratching our heads going, "You know, well, number one, Mayor, you know what? I couldn't tell you how to do your job. I don't have the experience and the training that you do, and I have that knowledge that I don't know." And so how can aldermen or the city council tell law enforcement officers, who are under more duress now than ever, how to do their job when you haven't had a lick of training in law enforcement, and face the dangers that our officers are facing now? So I would like to see the studies. I, you know, I will, my alderman happens to be Mr. Donilon. I'd love to supply you my email, and I'd love to see the research that has been done going in on this ordinance put together. And, you know, my detective friend told me, he, he explained to me about a no-knock warrant, that it's about the safety for the police officers, and that usually it's an informant who gives information to the cop, saying, "Yeah, I know that guy, you know, we dealt drugs together, and he said that if the cops come, I'm gonna shoot him." So it's things like that where they get, you know, you can't just go and do a no-knock warrant. So it was interesting to learn these things, and I think the average individual, me, don't know these things about no-knock warrants. So, you know, I just, again, I, I think about the men and women that I worked with years ago, being a police dispatcher, and I think about their lives, their sons, their daughters, their aunts, their uncles, their brothers and sisters. And I am just thinking about, can we tell them, as they put their lives on the line as they go out every day, what they can and cannot do? as they go out every day, what they can and cannot do, as far as the tools that they have already? And I just feel like it's, in this day and age, it's on the verge of being absurd. And I'm just asking the aldermen here to reject this police reform ordinance and to back the blue. Thank you.
Well, with regards to that, the tragic incident, and the police are one of those, I mean, when something happens in public, it resurrects throughout our whole country. So the George Floyd incident was, Chief will tell you, he's not here, but he said the officer, that was deadly force, I mean, it shouldn't have been used.
That's right.
And so he could speak to that, but what that does do in the case of Ferguson, I think it was in 2014, it gives everybody the opportunity to reassess, what are we doing?
Yes.
And I think James Johnson hit the nail on the head when, at that time, it was Archie Lawrence for me, he said, you know, "As white people, we don't have to worry about being pulled over like black people do. They teach their kids, gotta keep your hands on the steering wheel at a certain position. You don't make any sudden movements, things of that nature. Otherwise, what happened in Kenosha, that's not gonna happen to a white person, but it did for a black person." And I think the chief will tell you that it's time to step back, do self-critique, are we doing enough? How can we do things better? That's what we're gonna look at. How do we do things better to protect everybody?
Yes, Mayor.
And he'd be the first one to tell you, and that's why we'll have those discussions. But the ordinance isn't up for tonight, it's up for, I think it's next week and the week after, but he could speak to that as well. But Alderwoman Turner?
I appreciate your comments, and I, one thing that you said really resonated with me, when you said, "We want the officers to go home safely. We want everyone to go home safely." And, and it's important that we all work together to ensure that that happens. One of the, one of the things about this ordinance, and it's entitled, "An Ordinance Providing Guidance to the Springfield Police Department Regarding the Drafting, Adoption, Implementation, and Enforcement of Its General Orders." One of the things that really struck me about this whole process, and that's one of the reasons why I said what I said before about, I really appreciate the ability of everyone here to work together cooperatively to move our city forward. One of the things that bothered me about this is that, for a whole week, I was blasted as some very terrible adjectives, many of the same ones that were targeted to Alderwoman DeSensio, about an ordinance that no one had ever seen. And the reason, and I know they hadn't seen it because it wasn't even published until very late Friday afternoon, I think maybe 4:30, 5 o'clock. But for all of last week, social media was all abuzz with these horrible, horrible things about this ordinance that no one had ever seen. So, and as the mayor said, we will talk about it more later, but I think what's important is that I believe that Springfield has been a model community, not only in central Illinois, but probably for the state and around the country, for the way that we have responded to these months of ongoing turmoil that our country has, that our country has gone through. And I think one of the reasons why, because we've had marches, we've had rallies, we've had all of those things, but we have not had any confrontations. There have been no confrontations. And I think one of the reasons why that has happened is because we have built a community of trust with our police department. And so when you look at this ordinance, it's not something that I just sat at my kitchen table and said, "Oh, I think this is what we should do, I think this is what we should do, I think this is what we should do." It was a very deliberative process that occurred over a very long period of time. I think you, people here heard me, and maybe you heard me, talk about an introduction of a series of ordinances to address racial strife within our community. And we did pass the first anti-racism community investment ordinance, and then this was the second one. So there was a very deliberative process that included a full body of interested individuals and organizations. It included individuals who have been the subject of what they felt was police brutality. It included individuals who live within the disproportionate affected areas of our city. It included advocacy groups, it included individuals from law enforcement, it included attorneys who were both on the prosecution as well as the defense side. It included an array of individuals that we, they came up with a lot of things that they wanted included in this ordinance, and some of them I rejected out of hand because I felt that they were too restrictive and that they would not serve the purpose that I was looking for. So the goal of the ordinance is not to tie the hands of the officers, but to be very proactive and build on what I feel like are very good community police relations in this city. We're not trying to take resources away from the police. We're actually trying to provide them with a de-escalation approach, where everybody ends up going home safely. And I also have had conversations with, with, when I had conversations with Corporation Council on drafting the ordinance, he talked about that it was a, to set a standard, and that it did not go past state law, but it was to set a standard and did not go past state law. I would also interject that almost everything that's included in this ordinance, except those issues that deal with the Police Review Commission, are already a part of the police department's standard operating procedures. So it's not like we're reinventing anything. It's already a big part of what the police department has already instituted as their standard operating procedures. The only thing that we're doing is codifying it into ordinance form, because as I said before, things change. The mayor changes, the police chief changes, aldermen change. But our responsibility to provide a good policing model will never change. It may evolve, but it will never change. And so, and I did have conversations with the chief, and he had a couple of concerns, and I heard those concerns, and we'll be offering an amendment next week to address one of his concerns. So I think that it's just important that you know that this was a deliberative process that incorporates what is most, for the most part, already Springfield Police Department standard operating procedures, and a lot of the hullabaloo that happened over the last week was because people had not seen the ordinance and didn't really know what was included in it. It was a lot of social media, you know.
Did you know there was a news, there was something on Channel 20 News about it?
It was something on Channel, hold on, hold on.
You know, the hullabaloo that you're talking about.
Hold on, there was something on Channel 20 News about it that was talking about what they thought was going to be in the ordinance. Channel 20 News had not seen the ordinance because it had not been, it had not been, I don't think, if you really want to know the truth about it, and Corporation Council, correct me if I'm wrong, you and I were still talking about this ordinance maybe on Thursday.
No, that is correct.
Yeah, we were still talking about it on Thursday, so it was still in draft form Thursday.
In fact, ma'am, I think we actually talked about it Friday morning, too.
Friday morning, yes, because you were leaving a, as a matter of fact, yes, we talked about it on Friday morning, because he had sent me a draft, and I had some changes, and he was actually, took the time, he was leaving a funeral service and called me, and we made those changes. So the ordinance wasn't even drafted until Friday morning, and it was not made public until probably 4:30, 5 o'clock on Friday afternoon. So, again, there was a lot of miss, I don't even know if you call it miscommunication, because I never communicated with anyone about it, because, again, we were still drafting it on Friday, on Friday morning.
The time to discuss will be next week, that's when it'll come before the committee as a whole, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment?
Oh, it's in two weeks.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment real quick?
Alderman Gregory, thank you.
She can sit down, she want to. My, you know, my comments is, and, you know, I talked to Chief earlier, and, you know, I've been a black man 36 years, and I'll be 37 if I make it in February, God be willing. But, you know, every time we touch on police subjects, you know, we made out like we don't, like we don't like police as a whole. It might be one or two that we have some issues with, that we think that, that don't, you know, operate correctly, and it's our job to touch on reform. But as soon as we say something about it, this whole back the blue, she can't even stand up here and hear what somebody say, because they really can't stand me, and I don't care, because I'm gonna keep pushing for what's right. And we just, you know, people don't even, we don't even like talking about it, because we go through three and four days of crap. I would, man, I'm telling you, it's all types of new people, John Keaton, all these people trying to get into politics. It's crazy what you have to go through every time you touch on that little subject, but we supposed to be professionals. I go out, I say, "I shine, can't do that, da-da-da," but they can go on Facebook, talk crazy about us, everything else, but if I go do it, I'm stirring up everybody. If I put out all these videos of police brutality, the things that people are talking about in the community, you know, I'm stirring them up, so I don't do it. The point of it is, we don't, we're not trying to tell anybody trying to do their job, but the citizens of this community have an opinion, and if they don't like the way that our police are doing our job, then it's my stinking responsibility and everybody else's responsibility to address it and to get to truth. And that's it, and that's all. It's crazy. I, that's why I don't even like talking about it. It's ridiculous, that what we go through every time we talk about that crap, from people who work for us, work for this city. It's ridiculous. Man.
I think everybody's hit on an important point, and that's where, you know, there's so much untrust, turmoil throughout the country, and so, just like the police incident, have a reflection, anytime you have the civil unrest, everybody thinks, "Oh, my gosh, it's gonna happen here." And I think Alderwoman Turner hit the nail on the head with regards to, we try to do things what's in the best interest of our community, how do we move forward? And so, you know, while there's national movements and other movements, what we try to do is figure out how we can move better together. That's how, what we're trying to do each and every day, and that's been a challenge during this pandemic for a number of reasons. So we appreciate everybody's opinion with regards to that, we really appreciate everybody's civility, but most importantly, as importantly is the respect for one another, and that's how we'll move forward in a positive manner. But I think everybody understands, I think we all have the same goal, is how can we make things better? And I think as was stated, is making sure everybody's treated equally, and making sure everybody's safe, and move in that direction. Alderwoman DeSensio?
I just want to touch really quickly on something that Ms. Polito said, and that we're not police officers. No, I'm not a police officer, but Alderman Redpath was a police officer. I oversee a police force of 120 sworn officers, so I have some knowledge of law enforcement. Might not look like it, but I do. So, you know, the assumptions that are made sometimes by people who come up here and talk to us are not correct. So you might want to do your own research before you come up here and speak to us.
Okay. Really? My name is Reggie the Wetherspoons. I've been watching y'all on the internet. I don't even supposed to be at my house right now, because I'm walking, don't suppose me walking, because I got a broken leg. I'm gonna speak on two issues, okay? One, I love the police, you know what I'm saying? Some of the things that the police do, you know, I don't like, but since I come down here, Springfield, I seem different. I was raised in Chicago, out west, on Grand Central Station, you know what I'm saying? And Peoria, Peoria. I'm one of the victims that police shot three of my uncles right in front of my grandmother. I'm one of the victims that sit up there and had to literally survive on the street, had to literally fight them every day coming out my house and going home. I'm one of them. The reason why I changed my environment on my last bit, because I wanted to do better. That's why I didn't go back to Chicago, that's the main reason why I didn't go back to Peoria, because I knew if I go back there, I was going back to jail. I've been here nine years, never been in no trouble till this year, and I don't even like it. Sitting up here, a man hit a female, called me, I goes over there and fight, got set up and go to jail, had to burn out for $2,500 for protecting somebody. Then three weeks ago, I know about the case, what they talking about. I went down there, because they was blowing up my page. I went down there, leave a message at Tim City to let them know to call somebody, because their kids is worried about them. Dude pulled a knife out on me, and then he sit up there and pulled that same pipe out. Okay, I didn't have my glasses on, I had no shoes on. I went back to the house, got my gloves on, came back. I said, "Dude, I don't run from a fight, I go to the fight." You know what I'm saying? I said, "You wanna fight, let's fight. We gonna use our hands, we not gonna use no weapon." Same two people, pulled out a knife and that pipe. I said, "Dude, I'm gonna keep it real with you. You got one swing, and I'm gonna put you to sleep with my bare hands." Everybody out there, pull, grab dude, that's the thing, they were like, "Reggie, call the police." I did exactly that. Police was there less than five minutes, and I told, I supposed to told the police the truth. Police like, "Reggie, you go home, we got this." That was one incident. I didn't tell the police that. I did call. If he, if he goes and look on his watch, man, three weeks ago, he would hear it. Reggie the Wetherspoon called somebody to Tim City for a knife and a pipe, but I didn't sit up there and go to the state's attorney. I didn't know that this was gonna go even farther, because if I would have knew, they would have went farther, I would have went and got him myself. If I didn't go get him myself, I would have called Windsor, because I got his number on speed dial, but I don't. But what I did was, I left it alone, afraid about it, and stayed at home, that everybody been telling me to stay home, because I supposed to stay off my leg. But when I heard everybody talking about it that, I jumped out, got on the bike, came down here and speak. And number two, about, number two, I'm not gonna answer no question, because everybody know about it, about the woman's here. I told y'all, let it go. We just gonna have this problem. Now we got this problem. The idea is now, why is y'all not letting me sit at the table? I'm the one got the plans in my email. Some of y'all got the email from me five years ago, how we need to address this. Y'all want to address it as a house issue. It's more than a house issue when you dealing with alcoholics, drug addicts, and mental patients. You first got to find out how to get in their head and find a solution. How you gonna put somebody in the house that can't pay his own bills? He gonna end up right back on the street. You gotta come up with a program and a solution to sit up there and help them and put them in some type of training, to teach them how to pay their own bills. But everybody want to get credit where credit due. That's why we all, that's why everybody argue about racism. I don't see no racism. I need everybody to get on the right team, put everybody at the table, because you think of mine, one got this, uh, one got it, one got what I wrote up five years ago. I'm not trying, that's my friend, I'm not trying to put him on blast. I might not be- of mine, one got this, uh, one got it, one got what I wrote up five years ago. I'm not trying, that's my friend, I'm not trying to put him on blast. I might not be educational, but I'm streetwise. Men want to talk about it. Me, when the first, uh, director postman over there, I talked to her, the, the one was here last week, I don't know her name, she was short later, best friend in the world. Then Erica Smith, I tried to sit down and talk to Erica. The reason why the plan didn't work, because when I wrote it up, I wrote it up with programs. They took the programs out of it and tried to make it as a housing situation. That's why it folds. You remember when they said in the Bible, when it's for that person, it would go through, but if it's not for that person, it won't go through. The reason why it didn't go through, because I was never at the table. God put the vision on me to write it up, and I still got it. But everybody want to sit up there and be on the news talking about it, they not doing nothing about it. And only thing I'm doing, sitting at home, sitting on it, because I don't have the funds. I don't got the education, but I do got a high school diploma. But the one you need to talk to and sit at the table, me first.
Okay.
And I can show you the plan, I, I mapped it out, and I guarantee you, it will work. But if y'all don't want me at the table, it's not gonna work. Y'all come up with whatever plan y'all want to come, it gonna fall, because you got some people don't want no house, they want the street life, because why? Because they want to live on a land, they too scared to live, because they scared of responsibility. That's the idea you don't understand. Y'all not seeing the issue, it's the responsibility. People are scared of responsibility. Now, we can have this meeting, I want to be at the table, and I can show you, it's in my inbox, and I can show it to everybody I sent it to. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Reggie. Anybody else wish to address the council? I do have two announcements before we adjourn.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Alderman Conley.
Reggie's Ward Eight resident, um, and Reggie, I, I have you copy your email. He's not hearing me. That's all right.
He dropped the mic.
He's fine, it's fine. I just want to say, I, I do hope, it looks like John's going to talk to him, so that was, that was my comment. Thank, sorry, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, take care, Reggie.
Two items, one is a reminder, uh, for those, if you promote the census, again, people would go to twentytwentycensus.gov. Every individual that signs up, it means fourteen hundred dollars to the city of Springfield, so, uh, we'd appreciate everybody pushing that out through social media and everything else. The other thing, Facebook Live tomorrow is, uh, actually about homelessness, street homelessness. We have Penny Powell from Fifth Street Renaissance, Captain Jeff Eddy from Salve Charme, Erica Smith from Helping Hands, Julie Benson from Helping the Homeless in Springfield, and Josh Sabo from the continuum of care, so should be a good informational session. Any other announcements? Our chief, you want to wrap it up for us?
Thank you, snap, chief. No, I just want to come up here and, uh, I know there's a lot of, uh, tension in our community right now, tension between law enforcement, tension between our community, and we have to work together. Uh, a lot of us over the unknown. I heard what Alderman Turner and Alderman Gregory said, and I think there was a lot of communication last week, a lot of talk about the unknown, and people, you know, believing what they thought was gonna be someone, it wasn't. Uh, I got a draft over the weekend, I called Alderman Turner, Alderman Gregory, asked if we could have a meeting today. They graciously met with us, heard our concerns, I think we've come to, so, an agreement here as we move forward. But I sent to you folks, two and a half weeks ago or so, our pledge to professionalism, and it's on our website, it's everywhere, it's how I, how we run, or run our department, how we run our department. We could've waited for the state to come up with their ideas of reforms, or the feds to come up with their ideas of reform. When I looked at all those things that were going around, from our meetings with senators and legislators and congressmen, et cetera, we realized that we're already doing the vast majority. Additionally, we have to be the leaders here. As I sit and I look at some of these incidents that occur around the country, and we dissect them and we debrief them as a form of training for our department, so that if officers are in similar situations, they've already kind of thought through it, they know what options they have to, there, it's obvious to me as a chief that there aren't, we don't all have the same standards, we don't all have the same training, and there needs to be some kind of either statewide standard or national standard when it comes to use of force, in my opinion. And I've made that argument with chiefs around the state, I continue to do that, but again, we're not perfect, we make mistakes, use of force is very, very ugly, this is an ugly profession. We're gonna use force as police officers, and we're gonna get caught on the carpet for it, but that's what our job is, and that's what people need to remember. I worry that we might be at Kenosha. Two days before Kenosha, I have an officer chasing a gentleman on a shots fired call that started out on Ash Street that ended up on North Eleventh Street, and as he comes around the corner, he points a gun at my officer on body camera, and if it wasn't for a, the skills and older, more mature officer, who's a two-time vet of Iraq, it probably would've ended different, and he would've been justified, and a life would've been lost most likely. But that's just one of four incidents in the past five and a half weeks where guns have been pulled on officers, officers have confronted people with guns, a standoff with one where they waved several hours, waved guns at officers, and we did the right thing, then the guy ran to my squad car, and we still get him out without using deadly force. We're not perfect, we use force, it's ugly, but we all have to strive to do better, and that's what we're trying to do. Again, we're not perfect, we're gonna make mistakes here and there, but with that said, it's profession, we have to grow, we have to learn. And my officers, I'm sure there's some talk about what might be in that, um, resolution. I'm probably gonna send it out tomorrow, since it was announced tonight, I'm probably gonna send it out and let them see it, and then we'll probably have discussions about what's in there. You know, we'll probably wait till the, I'll probably get with Mr. Zirkel in Corporation Council tomorrow to get the final draft before I send it out, but again, you know, I will wait. But we have to be willing to understand that law enforcement has a very, very difficult job right now, our community has a very difficult job, and it takes every one of us up here, every one of you, that if something does go sideways, because it's gonna happen, you know, if you look historically throughout my career, there's an officer involved shooting about every two years, that's what statistically will play out. You know, we don't want it to happen, we trained for it don't to happen, but we also got to remember, we have to educate the community on their rights, so they know, that's a hard thing for law enforcement to do, when someone doesn't know their rights, and they think they're following their rights, and they end up getting arrested for obstructing or something else. The other part is that we have to realize that we cannot grieve this on the side of the road, you have to comply with the officers on the side of the road. You cannot even resist an unlawful arrest by law, okay? We have to all go home and, like, somebody said that earlier, our community members, our officers, everybody, and then we'll sort it out. The most important thing is going home, and we've done, um, educational seminars throughout the city over the years with that, partnering with the NAACP as well as other, uh, civic groups to do that, and we got to do more of that, and with COVID right now, we haven't been able to do it, but it's so important right now to get that out there and do that educational piece, that we have to get to that point. But again, in order to move forward, we all got to work together, and as I said a minute ago, it's so important, we got to comply, we got to educate, we got to do the right things as police officers as well, and again, you know, uh, I look forward to the ordinance being read in a couple of weeks, I'm sure I'll get called up here for some questions. I'm good with it, okay? This is a difficult conversation. Um, I'm sure I'll get some officers who don't like it, I will tell you that, um, for the most part, I've, I've already talked to my union president, he knows what, uh, we put in our pledge, he agreed with it, uh, he knows that we already do all that. Uh, I'll tell you right now, changes to PCRC, they're probably gonna demand a bargain, but with that said, everything else, I think they're on board with for the most part, because it's what we already do. We don't need to turn this into something bigger than what it is, but with that said, you know, I'll be the first to say, I wasn't a big fan, still not really a big fan about codifying my general orders, because I worry about need to change and coming back here if we need to change something when statutory law or case law changes, but we'll jump through what hoops we have to do, because that's what we do as a professional organization. But I am gonna have officers who messed up, we're gonna have to hold our people accountable when they mess up, and we're gonna move forward, but what I need your help for is that I do believe that our whole country right now is a potential tinderbox, and we all got to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Alderman Turner?
Yeah, I, um, I appreciate the chief's comments. Everyone heard loudly and clearly that he, he said, everything that's in this ordinance is what their standard operating procedures already are. The only different things are the things that relate to the police review, the citizens' review commission, and, um, and I, and I think that that's important, because I don't want to see, I think that we have to be very proactive, and I don't want to see what's happening around this country happen in Springfield, and it, and it very well could, and it, just like that, we could go to bed tonight and wake up, and, and I think that we have to be proactive to ensure that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Turner, I, I want you to know, I've, I've had some conversations with police officers already, and, um, I, I'm, I've, I've tried even with people who reached out to me to clarify and to say, hey, look, you probably need to read this ordinance, from my understanding with, what the chief has just said, this is, this is by and large what is already being practiced in our, our very professional police department. Um, and, and I just want to say, and the, the one, I was talking to a gentleman yesterday, and, and the one point he made was that as, as police officers, they want to know that we support them, and, and I, I think that's what is absolutely the intention of this ordinance and of everyone around, around the horseshoe, and, and Alderman Gregory, you've said it before, you know, you get tired of having to say, you know, of course we support the police. I think what we need to be clear is that this is an attempt for us to show how important it is that, that everyone goes home, and that we appreciate it, it's a difficult job. I, I get it, there are people who I, I don't want to mess with, I, I couldn't do the job, I know that, um, but I, I think that this is a good, a good conversation point, and, and I do think that I, I hope that people will take, because I, we do have a week off, it's gonna be two weeks, so I hope in that two weeks, people understand that this is not an ordinance that we need to be fighting each other over, it needs to be something that we're having a conversation about, really, again, and, and chief, I, I salute your troops, Alderman, when we see how few incidents we've had with all the strife that's been going on in, nationally, we've had, we've had all sorts of protests, we've had all sorts of different rallies on different sides of all, all sort, all issues, and, and your, your, your officers have behaved very respectfully and very professionally, and I appreciate that very much. And I think that we have a good conversation here to talk about what it means to be a part of a community that's respected by its police and part of a police department that's respected by its community, because it has to go both ways, and, and I, Alderman, I, I appreciate and thank you for bringing this forward, because it is a conversation we need to have. I just hope that in the next two weeks, that as a community, we can have this in, in a way that's a little calmer than how it originally started, and, and to be, and, and full disclosure, I'm not on Facebook a whole lot anymore, I, the social media stuff has just, has gotten to be too ugly, so.
Yeah, and, and I would hope that if, I mean, I want to talk about it with everyone, and, and you know, you guys know that's my style, I, I do, I, I call people, I talk to people, I want to hear your concerns, I want to, and, and it gives me an opportunity to explain, because sometimes what's on the paper is not, you know, it, we need to have a conversation about it. So as you, everyone reviews it, please, let's, you know, let's talk about it, and I would encourage other people in the community, if you have concerns, let's, you know, call me and, and let's talk about it, I'm more than will, happy, not willing, happy, to talk to anyone about it and, and answer any questions that you may, that, that you may have.
Any other announcements or discussion? Yep, if you'd like to come forward, state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Mark Mason, I'm a resident of Springfield, I'm also a member of law enforcement, I'm also a member of the NAACP. First, I want to, before I start, commend, Mr. Mayor, I commend you for the job you've been doing. I commend Chief Winslow for the job he's been doing. I commend James Johnson, that's a young man that got a voice, and he's not afraid to state his voice. In order to solve problems, you have to know what's really on a person's mind, because if you keep it hidden, it makes it hard to address. I'd like to commend Alderman Sean Gregory, Alderman Doris Turner, because I have witnessed them so many times, that even in their spare time, when they're not here being Alderman, they out in the community. If we want to set an example in life, we have to lead by example, and they have spent numerous hours feeding the homeless, feeding people who don't have food on their tables. We all want to see a change. In law enforcement, when a situation happened, where there's a terrible shooting or whatever, sometimes those become training tapes, and in training, we watch that video, and we ask ourself, what, if we was in that situation, what could we have done to make that situation different? What other angle could we have come at that? We have, I know, I know, you know, I ain't saying everybody been watching TV, but then everybody is not Stevie Wonder. You been watching the media, we been seeing what's been happening in other states, to include in other countries. We see what the problem is in other countries, and hopefully, hopefully, the state capital here in Springfield, we look at these, look at what's happening in the media, is the media gonna always be true? Well, no, the media ain't gonna always be true, but you know what? I think we all have seen enough that we should be able to ask ourself, let's make Springfield a stronger city, so that we don't end up being like these other cities, because you know what? These are our kids, our family, our grandkids, your kids, your sons, your daughter, and if we don't step up the boundaries, well, guess what? Those affected is gonna be your kids, your grandkids, your mother, your father, maybe even you and I. We got to jump on it, and as long as we keep our head in the right direction, we can achieve it. Yes, there's still a lot of work that need to be done, and blessed are the ones who realize that it need to be done and stand behind it and do it, because if we don't do it, we won't get nowhere. You know, um, as the one lady said, blue lives matter, it do, it ain't the only lives that matter. I'm a firm believer that all lives matter, it's just that, yes, sometimes we do have to remind people that black lives matter too, with the all lives matter. In order to be fair, we had, you know, God created everybody equal, he knew what he was doing from the beginning of time. Everybody was created equal in God's eyesight, and when this world come to an end, and you got to stand before God, you're not gonna enter the gates of heaven with hatred, racism, and unforgiveness on your heart. I don't care what church you go to, or what do you believe in church, and I'm, and I'm not trying to offend nobody religion. Words are like swords, and to some people, it do permanent damage. A lot of people have problems with unforgiveness. The best thing to do is don't make yourself the falling seed, because what goes around comes around, I'm a firm believer in that, and you don't want to be on the receiving end when it comes back to you if you was part of the problem. Now, everybody's here, you know, we hearing what's need to be done in the city of Springfield, and I've, and I have heard some, I heard some good suggestions, and that's the even more suggestions that could be made, but it all takes time, wrong one built in a day. But the more I believe that this city can come together, and let's be fair, let's be, I can't stress enough, let's be fair in decision-making. Think of it as if it's in your neighborhood, your schools, what's good in your neighborhood should be good in all of our neighborhoods in Springfield, not just one certain neighborhood, because you know what, it's gonna be a problem. The homeless situation? The homeless situation, the tent situation, yes, it, it is a problem. I have patrol pass there. I have responded to calls over there. There's still a lot more that, that need to be done in Springfield. But you know what? We can be the leaders, and we can get it done, because in the future, our kids could be making a decision. The young ones could be the one in charge. And if we don't set the example for them today, then I would hate to see what, what the future is gonna be like. But I wanted to commend, and the mayor, you know, me and you have spoke many times, and I thank you. And I thank the chief, because he have came out into the community, he have came out even into the east side of the community. Some might have a problem with that, but I think he's trying to bridge the gap. And like Mr. Johnson said, there are good cops and there are bad cops. I'm in law enforcement. I'm a person of color, I'm on NAACP, but guess what? I'm not a person that's on the outside looking in or the inside looking out. I'm both. I'm on the outside looking in and I'm on the inside looking out. So see, I can see the, the, the full picture, okay? So the thing is, is there's bad people in everything, not just in law enforcement. There are bad seeds, doctors, lawyers, teachers, you name it. But we got to, we got to build ourselves stronger than that. The, one Alderman that was speaking as far as the budget with first responders and stuff like that, first responders dealing with 911, this is a serious situation. I don't even see how you can even plan a budget if you can't control the situation. I don't think, I don't think COVID-19 gonna leave by December, I think it's gonna be here for a while. So let's look at it as be for a while. First responders, they the first one responding to danger. Their life is out there more than somebody who work at Dunkin' Donuts. And any available funds that, that can be used for first responders to help keep us safe, it, you know, it should never be a shortage in that if, if it's not possible. That's something that we need to stay strong on. I thank you all for your time, because you know what? If y'all didn't care, y'all wouldn't even be here. You could've came up with excuses, say I'm sick or whatever, but you here, so there's a real reason that you here. And I don't know all of you personally, but you know what? I do believe that deep down somewhere inside of your heart, that there is goodness in y'all. I really do. Y'all would not be in the position that y'all in if other people didn't see that. So I'm gonna thank you. All I can say, hey, let's, let's continue to make Springfield a better place. But the only way we can do that, the only way we can do that, is we got to have real love. We can't let racism, we can't let hatred, unforgiveness divide us, because those three elements right there, we'll never see the picture. But we put that aside, guess what? We can get the job done. I thank y'all for y'all time.
Mr. Mason, which, which police force are you, are you part of, sir?
I'm part of the Springfield Park Police now.
Thank you.
I done been with so many different departments, I get confused with my uniform.
Thank you, thank you. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Yes.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
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 For adjourn, thank you.